Start again. Anyway, we had nothing to report out, so thank you all. The next item is that we have teleconference meetings. And good evening and thank you for viewing the June 5th City Council meeting. And it's a hybrid meeting as we've been having for months now. And before we start, we have, I have one item I want to ask that we can change, and that's the Arcata School District is going to be providing a presentation to us. And I'm hoping to be able to have the council agree to moving that just before old business so that they don't have to stay as long. So can we have a motion to that effect?
Uh, so moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Well, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. It passed. Thank you. The next item is the land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known as, in the Wiat language, as guini, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous people from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both present and past, as well as future generations. And this acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narrative of settlers' colonialism. So I'd like to ask you if you'd like to join us for the flag salute. Thank you. Thank you. May we have roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Stillman?
Present.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmembers Matthews and Atkins Salazar are absent, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you. If you wish to make comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for individual agenda items, there are three ways to do it. If you're here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. If you're logged into Zoom, click, raise your hand, and when it's time for public comment on that item you may wish to speak on. If you're on the phone, press star nine, and on your phone you will raise your hand. And when it's your turn to speak on the phone, you must press star six. For items that we will be taking in person and public comment first and then move to online comments, we do not go back and forth, so if you are wanting to comment, please line up right now at the podium and raise your electronic hand as soon as the public comment is requested item. So I think anyone that would like to come, this is a new procedure, we haven't had this before, please come to the podium. Did I skip something?
No ceremonial matters first?
Oh, well, this is the way it's written, so I'm writing, I'm following this new agenda, and that's what it says.
Well, it says that, but I'm just...
Okay, well, let's go into ceremonial matters. Then we have proclamations. The first one is the World of Oceans Days, and that's June 8th, and that will be read by Kimberly White.
Thank you. Yeah, World Ocean's Day, June 8th, 2024. Whereas, the ocean provides one half of the oxygen we breathe, regulates our climate, and provides us food, water, and economic support. World Ocean's Day is annual opportunity to honor the world's oceans by building awareness of the crucial role the ocean plays in our lives. And whereas, the people of Humboldt County can help protect our ocean's future by partnering and volunteering with local schools and organizations such as Surf Rider Humboldt, the North Coast Environmental Center, and Humboldt Waterkeeper. And whereas, the city of Arcata's Environmental Services Department also organizes opportunities year-round to help clean our creeks and improve watershed health by keeping trash from entering the Humboldt Bay, thus reducing the impact of marine debris on ocean ecosystems. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the city of Arcata hereby recognizes Saturday, June 8th, 2024, to be World Ocean's Day in Arcata, and encourages the community to participate in coastal and watershed cleanup throughout the year dated June 5th by Vice Mayor Alex Stillman.
Which I haven't signed. Oh. I didn't sign it yet for just a moment. Okay, here you go. Thank you.
And I will be presenting this then to Julie Stewart, the vice chair of Surf Riders Humboldt.
So if you'd like to say a few words, you may. Thank you.
Great. Hello, I'm Julie Stewart, and this is Marina Story, and we are here representing Surf Rider Foundation, the Humboldt chapter. And on behalf of Surf Rider Humboldt, we want to extend our sincerest thanks to the city council for this World Ocean's Day proclamation. For those unfamiliar, Surf Riders dedicated to protecting and enjoying the ocean, waves, and beaches through a global network of activists. In celebration of World Ocean's Day this Saturday, I'd like to encourage you to visit, and all of you to visit, one of our local ocean-friendly restaurants registered with our foundation. The Ocean Friendly Restaurants program is where establishments commit themselves to making eco-friendly choices, primarily eliminating or largely minimizing single-use plastics as a way to protect our oceans. Our current restaurants who have committed themselves to this cause include Six Rivers Brewery in Mecklenleville and the Jippo Ale Mill in Shelter Cove. We thank those businesses for partnering with us on this important cause. If a local Humboldt restaurant is interested in becoming a Surf Rider ocean-friendly restaurant, please check out our website at humboldt.surf rider.org, and thank you again for championing this cause.
And thank you very much. Well, it's that time of year again for the oyster festival to come about, so we're going to have a proclamation on the week of the oyster. And so Bob Judevine is here from the Chamber of Commerce to accept it. Whereas, the Arcata's Chamber of Commerce, to showcase Arcata's relationship to its high-quality water resources in Arcata's Humboldt Bays, is producing the 34th Annual Arcata Oyster Bay Festival on Saturday, June 15th, 2024, to be held on the Arcata Plaza and throughout Arcata. The Arcata Chamber of Commerce recognizes the city of Arcata and the city of Eureka's significant efforts to improve, maintain water quality in Humboldt Bay, which supports aquaculture, plant and fish populations, and many recreational activities. And whereas, our local aquaculture industry farms over 450 acres of the Arcata Bay to produce the highest quality and the largest quantity of oysters in the state of California. And whereas, the Arcata Chamber of Commerce, Arcata's Bay Oyster Festival typically attracts from all over the nation and the state of California to enjoy our natural bounty, culinary talents, entertainment, and downtown ambience. This event is an important showcase of the community and contributes significantly to the local economy through tourism while increasing awareness of the local resource conservation and the city's unique identity and varied hospitality services. And whereas, this year, the entire community, young, old, family, singles, are invited to attend this event on Plaza, featuring live music from 10 to 5 on Saturday, June 15th. Participants are encouraged to dance the day away, taste the unique culinary creations, join the oyster-calling contests, shuck-and-swallow contests, try the children's activities, and more. There will be a map showcasing where to find your favorite oysters and artisans, local wines, spirits, and thousands of fellow revelers celebrating our wonderful town. Therefore, be proclaimed that, oh my goodness gracious, proclaim that the city of Arcata, thereby designates June 9th through the 15th, 2024, as the week of the oyster, and encourages all community members to enjoy the food, fun, and music and frolic at the Arcata Chamber of Commerce 34th Annual Oyster Festival on the Arcata Plaza on Saturday, June 15th. It's dated June 5th, 2024, and I actually signed this one, so.
Thank you, Alex. Esteemed councilmembers, amazing staff. On behalf of the Board of Directors of the Arcata Chamber and our talented staff, thank you so much for the honor and the trust that you placed in us to take on this Arcata, gosh, Arcata institution. So it is our first year, we're extremely excited, we've been thinking about little else, staying up nights, working weekends, getting ready for really the best party in Humboldt County. So I'd like to extend a warm invitation to all of you to come and say hello. I'm going to be hiding in a back room counting money because I'm a banker, but maybe I'll see you out there for some oysters. So thank you so much.
And so if there's anyone out in the audience that would like to help me with the merchandise booth, I'm looking for help between 3:00 and 5:00 on the day of the oyster festival. I have the rest of my volunteers, but I definitely need the help. So thank you. Our next proclamation is Recognizing National Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, and Sarah Schaefer will be reading that. Thank you, Sarah.
Recognizing June 2024 as National Alzheimer and Brain Awareness Month. Whereas, there are more than 7 million Americans living with Alzheimer dementia today, a figure that is expected to grow as many as 14 million by 2025 if scientists do not, 2050, if scientists do not develop a cure or effective treatment. Whereas, 1 in 3 seniors die with Alzheimer or other dementia, and it kills more people than breast cancer and prostate cancer combined. Between 2000 and 2021, deaths from heart disease have decreased 2.1%, while deaths from Alzheimer's has increased 141%. And whereas, the lifetime risk for Alzheimer at age 45 is 1 in 5 for women and 1 in 10 for men. And whereas, more than 11 million Americans provide unpaid care for people with Alzheimer's or other dementias. In 2023, these caregivers provided more than $18 billion hours of care valued at nearly $347 billion. And whereas, Alzheimer's disease is a local issue, our friends and neighbors need access to support and services and resources to lessen the disease's impacts. In Humboldt County, it is estimated that 3,384 people currently live with Alzheimer's and related dementia. There are another 7,600 caregivers who are caring for a loved one with Alzheimer's. And whereas, fewer than 1 in 5 Americans are familiar with mild cognitive impairment, which can be an early, which can be an early stage of Alzheimer's, 90% of physicians say it's important to diagnose MCI due to Alzheimer's, but over half say they are not fully comfortable making that diagnosis. And whereas, during June, the Alzheimer's Association invites Humboldt County residents to participate in the Longest Day on June 21st. Held annually on the summer solstice, the Longest Day invites participants to fight the darkness of Alzheimer's through fundraising activities of their choice or by wearing purple. Now, therefore be it proclaimed, by the City Council of the city of Arcata, recognizes June 2024 as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. The council thanks the Alzheimer's Association for providing services to people and families coping with dementia. Dated today, June 5th, and signed by Vice Mayor Alex Stillman, and we have Ronna Johnson and Joanne Consulman of the Alzheimer's Association volunteers here.
Hi, I'm Ronna, and this is Joanne. We are, we are volunteers for the Alzheimer's Association. I want to thank the council for issuing this proclamation, it's very important. This is a disease that will affect everybody in this room in some way eventually. Personally, it has affected me. I lost my husband to Alzheimer's last year, and he was only 67. So you can help us achieve our goal of a world without Alzheimer's and other forms of dementia by participating in the Walk to End Alzheimer's, by either forming a team or volunteering on the day of the event, or by joining the Walk Committee, which meets once a month, or by doing all three. The event, the Walk to End Alzheimer's, is October, Saturday, October 19th, and it will be held at the Adorni Center in Eureka. To get involved, you can Google ALZWalk, Humboldt Walk, ALZ Humboldt Walk, that's A-L-Z Humboldt Walk. Anyhow, thank you very much for proclaiming this. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a report from one of our Commissions or Committee. And this evening, we have the Forest Management Committee and the vice chair, Michael Furness, is going to update us on their activities. Thank you, Michael.
All right. Thanks. Happy to be here. You have your annual report prepared by the staff and reviewed in detail by the committee. And if you would pull that out, I'm actually going to refer to a couple of maps in there. I got all excited about giving the council a primer on the forest, because I finally sort of put the story all together in my head and made my slides and then found out that we really don't have time in this agenda for that. So I hope at some point we will give you a description of this forest estate that you oversee. It's four square miles, it's arguably the best forest type in the world, it holds the most carbon of any forest type, and it supports itself and makes money. So with that said, I hope maybe at some point we can make 15 minutes available to give you more of a primer on the history and the biology and the policy and all that. So I think you might find it very interesting. But just to start out, if you go to the last page of your packet, and you'll see a map in there, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware that when we say Arcata Community Forest, we're actually referring to three different tracts that have a different history and a different character, different time they were established in that. And so the one at the top, the one that's very familiar and right behind us, is the Arcata tract. And we often call that the Arcata Community Forest, but there's a couple of other tracts. And the other one is Sunny Bray, just to the south of that, and connected now by the Ridge Trail. So we have the Arcata tract, the Sunny Bray tract, and then way down to the south in the Jacoby Creek drainage is the Jacoby Creek tract. Jacoby Creek tract was established in 1942, it was initially owned by a water company to provide water for the city, and has been added to a lot since then. And so the total acreage is about 2,445 acres for the entire Arcata Forest Estate. And I'll get to the other map as we go. I'm just going to highlight a few things. I'm not going to read the whole thing to you, but I urge you to read it through, there's a lot of detail about what we did in the last year and what we intend to do in the coming year. And then first of all, we adopted a priority-setting system that I think is very helpful, and it's a living system, it will change as we go, but I think a lot of what natural resource people do is set priorities, because you can never do it all, and you have to figure out what's most important, what you put the focus on, and we've done that in the staff and working with the committees, and I think that was a nice advance. I'll also mention the carbon program. This is one that we, we're one of the first movers on, thanks to Marc Andre, and getting this set up through the Climate Action Reserve, the state Climate Action Reserve, or what some of you may know as the Cap and Trade Program. And so we prepared high, very high-quality carbon offset credits. It's kind of the highest carbon, highest quality in the world, really, very rigorous system of identifying the amount of wood that's available to promise for 100 years. And so if you go to the second to the last page, you'll see that map of the climate reserves for Arcata. And it's a total of about 785 acres. It's, it doesn't occur in the Arcata tract, but it occurs big time in the Sunny Bray tracks and then some significant areas as well in the Jacoby Creek tract. It's about 100,000 climate reserve tons, tons of carbon. And most of the originally certified carbon has been sold. I think it yielded about a little over half a million dollars in carbon offsets. And there's been a lot of effort, and this is what has happened big time this year, a lot of effort in remeasuring that, and it was called a validation step. And once that's complete, it's not quite done yet and all modeled out and whatnot, but once that's done, we'll have quite a bit, probably quite a bit more carbon to put on the market. And just as a note, when these credits were established, they, it was worth about $11 a ton, and now on the voluntary market, it's worth about $32 a ton. And so it's a pretty good return on investment there. It was, it was a very good choice to do that, so. And then just a few other things. No timber harvest occurred in 2023 because of administrative duties and just how the timing tends to work, but we do have a timber sale planned for 2024. And then we continue to strengthen our working relationships with the Wiat tribe, whose territory, homeland, territory, this whole area is on, through target outreach. And then recently, we had a wonderful presentation by these preeminent biologists in our town, Steve Sellett and Marie Antoine. And they have done something that I think a lot of us have been thinking about all along but hadn't really named it and implemented it as a policy, and that is what's called potential elder trees, or PET for short. And those are trees that we judge are, have the best potential to get the biggest of all. And the biggest trees develop the most biological canopy diversity, they store the most carbon, and it's really what we've been saying we were after on the Arcata Community Forest all along, is like big old trees that look something like what it used to look like here. And so the Forest Management Committee is going to spend some time in the field trying to define what this looks like, what a potential elder tree looks like, and designate those for perpetual standing. And so it's a really, really kind of an exciting thing, and, and we can talk more about it if anyone's interested. So potential elder trees, PETs. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and field them, and Michael McDowell and Emily Sinkhorn are here, who know more about a lot of these things than I do. But anyway, my name is Michael Furness, I forgot to introduce myself. I've been on the Forest Management Committee since 2005. We have a very stable committee, which is sort of typical in forestry culture. And I'm a forest science scientist and a climate adaptation specialist, so. Any questions?
Well, thank you, Michael. So my understanding is, is that we don't have any carbon credits for sale right now, is that correct?
That's right. I think we're tapped out until we find out how much more has grown since we originally certified these.
Well, the one thing we do have is, at the Humboldt Area Foundations, we do have an Arcata Forest Fund. So I'm thinking that people who aren't buying the credits, but one time we talked about if you're traveling by plane or whatever, you may want to buy some credits to offset your trip.
Right.
And I'm assuming people are still doing that, except there's none for sale. But I was thinking about the other day, when I checked on our Arcata, the fund, Forest Fund, that that's another way that people could start making donations to that as a carbon offset. And I just wanted to suggest that out there to the world, that we maybe think about that. And I just recently made a donation, thinking about my travels and how I should be actually thinking about putting money there.
Yeah, I think we could make the case readily that the overall management of Arcata Community Forest is beneficial toward carbon storage. Redwoods don't rot, they don't burn, they grow very quickly, they don't slow down when they get big, they're beloved by many. It is not a great machine for storing carbon as a nature-based solution, it is the machine. There's no other species that comes close to the suitability of this for storing carbon. They do rot and they do burn, but not like most other forest types. So, so yes, I think we could make that case, and then we should have some carbon offset credits to sell fairly soon, once that modeling and final calculation gets done.
So thank you very much. Does the council have any comments or questions for Michael?
I don't have any questions. I did just want to say thank you, Michael, and to the whole committee. You guys are one of our committees that is full and committed and does really excellent work, and so we just really appreciate it, and hopefully I wrote a note to myself here to the city manager to set up a tour of some of our forest lands sometime coming up here, and it would be great to get out there and see what you guys are doing, so, yeah.
Yeah, we would love to toast you for that, and we have, I'll just say, we've issued quite a few invitations, and we would be delighted if we were taken up on that. So, yeah. And there's lots, lots of cool places to go that aren't so far, and we can show you what this light-touch, options-management approach that we take as well, so, and I think you'll be proud of, of your forest estate.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for a very thorough report, and I'm looking forward to hopefully that PowerPoint presentation in the near future. 2005, thank you for your service to the community, it's a long time. There's some incredible photos that you included in our packet of our local forestry wildlife, so that was really fun.
Yeah.
I know that everybody's super in love with open space parks and trails, and just wanted to remind folks about the Venza maps for navigating over those, what, 18 miles of roads and trails. And also, I just wanted to comment, if you haven't seen these, they have got some pretty fun names, like the Peanut Butter Trail at the trailheads, and of course, the new trailhead sign, I guess it's Lorax and Jelly, so fun names. And also wanted to, I'm pleased to hear that you guys are working with, continue to work with the Redwood Coast Mountain Bike Association and the Humboldt High School Composite Mountain Bike Team, and of course, we are strengthening our partnerships with the Wiat tribe. And again, in addition to the state and federal, we continue to strengthen our partnerships with both Cal Poly Humboldt and College of the Redwoods. So, yeah, thank you for doing all that targeted outreach and your awesome years of service, almost 20 now, right?
Yeah, so it's been a long time.
Yeah, thank you.
And a grand total income of zero.
Thank you for your volunteer service.
It's volunteer service, and it's just so interesting, I can't stop, so.
Well, so one thing, I just, here I am, gonna just give this little, but, you know, when we were working on the Ridge Trail and we needed additional funding, and so we had a committee of people that helped put on Baton Rouge. We had two times of Baton Rouge down at the Crabs Fall Field, and that is one of the reasons we were able to pull together the Ridge Trail funding.
Yes.
And so I'm hoping that we'll be able to do Baton Rouge again in the future, and I'm just mentioning that now because you're bringing, you're here, and I just remember how much fun that was and how we were able to raise those funds.
Yeah, thank you. It was huge fun, and let's do it again, and there's always a lot of needs for, for additional funding, a lot of opportunity, let's say, yeah.
So thank you, and along with Sarah, I do hope that we can have a presentation on our agenda in the future.
Okay.
So thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item will be the council and staff reports. With the revised protocol manual, we have made a few changes to our agenda format, and we are now in the effect, in the factor. And the first is a hearing, is hearing from staff and council. Their updates.
Yeah, thank you. So we thought we'd just take staff reports today to do a quick primer. We should be launching the draft of the budget. I'll say by Monday. It sounds safe. Hopefully before the weekend, but we'll say by Monday. So just for both the council and the community, once that draft is up, for anticipation of our budget hearing next Wednesday on June 12th, since we don't have a meeting on that following Juneteenth, we thought we'd do a little primer on how to look through our new live and interactive Open Gov budget. So with that, I will just turn it to our finance director, Tabitha Miller.
Thank you, good evening. So we thought, just as, as the city manager said, that it would be helpful to just do a really cursory overview of going through, excuse me here, the online budget tool. And we, you can see, you've got it up here in front of us. This is basically the table of contents. This is what, you'll have a link that will be embedded both in the staff report, there'll be a link from the finance page, and then also from our transmittal letter, so there'll be plenty of ways you can get to it. And it will be a helpful tool when you're going through budget review for next week for the special meeting on Wednesday, the 12th, and just giving you a few more tools because you'll be able to dive into it. I am going to tell you that, well, it looks great today. About sometime this afternoon, I got this big nasty red hand that came up and said error, and I've been escalated three levels at Open Gov because they can't figure out what it is. It seems to be working, but since it's not my day, and things seem to be throwing, coming at me pretty fast, if anything goes wrong, I just apologize ahead of time. So there's two menus, you've got menus across the top, the index will always bring you back here. Your introduction will provide you access to the introduction documents. These are typically what's already in your traditional budget book that you get by paper every year. Your budget summary is going to be your big picture, big-picture level overview of the budget. It's going to be the summary of all the dollars, it's going to be a comparison, it's going to give you your fund balances by fund and then transfers. Budgets by fund... Budgets by fund are where you can see all the detailed funds, and these from this tab up here are in alphabetical order, so it basically allows you to click on any one and drill into it. And more is just going to be our capital budget, department work plans, and the appendix. And again, the other way to get to them is through the links here at the bottom, so you've got everything you might want to see all in one page, and it's easy. I'm gonna go into the transmittal budget overview. And this is for council, but also for anybody. This is an abbreviated version of our transmittal lever, level, excuse me, letter. The one that you'll receive next, this week is going to be 12 pages, this one is about one and a half, but it's a nice summary of where we're at, provides you kind of an overview of the budget itself. Excuse me. Something else that is sort of interesting is that we've provided the city council goals are here, so they're always available to you, and they'll be online, and you'll be able to access those, and we've got some pretty pictures. And then also, your priority projects. I'm gonna jump into, excuse me here, I'm gonna jump into the general fund, which is probably going to require me to move over, so here we go. So, each fund has a separate page, and it's set up so that you can see the individual amounts, there's an overview where we have departments involved, you'll see some pictures, some additional information, but because the general fund is so inclusive of so many services and so many departments, it's standalone here, but it gives you a nice summary. And what you can see here is you can see the revenues itemized by type, the expenses itemized by type, and then you can also see how things are happening at the bottom. So, you can see, and this is the budget, the 2425 budget, we are projecting a $2.5 million deficit. Here's the prior year being 3.5, where 2.4 million of those dollars are actually one-time dollars for one-time projects, and capital being included in there. Below that, you can also come down, you can see each individual activity or department, so you can also see what those cost. And it follows down, this is quite a long one, so you can have to scroll. The other tool you have is at the bottom of each one of these reports, and this will be true in each fund, and even in the department work plans, you have a little icon that allows you to view report. Which actually brings you into our side of the picture. And this is interactive, and this is where if you really are a nerd and want to dive down into specific dollars, or you want to see more information, or you want to see it in a different way, this will allow you to. You can see, we've got all of the expenses broken out by activity here, and you can see how they compare. If you wanted to look at it in a, you know, smallest to largest, you can change that. You can scroll down below, you've got that same chart that we were looking at below. But this one, you can collapse it all, if you want to just look very high picture, you can also drill down into them. So, you've got an ability to work with each one, and when you get into the individual work programs, you can actually drill down into the individual detailed account level, so it gives you quite a bit of information. You can also, if you really want to get savvy, and you wanted to filter and look, look at it in other ways, you can actually play with selecting funds, looking at graphs, changing the way it looks, and I'm happy to work with anybody who is interested in more detail or more specifics on this, but I would encourage anybody who has any interest to play around with it, see how it works, figure out what works, and if you have questions, you can certainly reach out to me either by email or by phone call. Let me go back to the main pretty page, maybe. This one, right? Yeah. There we go. There we go. So, with that, I don't want to spend too much time on this, but I did want to give you just an overview in anticipation of the heavy load that you have over the next week looking at the 2425 budget. Any questions while we're here?
No, I just want to comment, I'm excited, and I'm looking forward to nerding out on this and checking it out.
I've at least got one person.
You're gonna show, have to show me how to get there again, but yeah, it looks great, I'm excited.
I will actually, I'll, when we get there, separate from the package, I will email you a link, so that that's all you have to do is click on that.
Well, that would be nice, appreciate that. Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there additional staff reports? Counsel reports? Would you like to start first, Kimberly? Do you want to go first? Go ahead.
The only big, newish, exciting thing I have to report, I said before, they were going to be doing a showing, the sister city committee of the film that they made called Big Yellow, and it's the documentary they made about the first trip down to Kamwapa in the big yellow bus. And it's going to be kind of like a precursor fundraiser for the I-Block Party, and just to get information out there about what the Sister City Committee does. And so, that's going to be Thursday, June 27th, at the Arcata Playhouse at 6:30, and they're going to show the documentary. It's actually a fairly short documentary, I think it's only about like 30 to 45 minutes long. There's gonna be live music, and then also some speakers and updates about the projects in Kamwapa. So, that'll be coming up June 27th. And nothing really to report from our CEA, it's budget season, and it's not great in the energy world, so, we're having fun with that. And then, just other general reminder, and I don't know if you were gonna say this, Alex, but Thursday is the Oyster Fest kickoff party slash the normal chamber mixer for the month of June. It's going to be at the pub, and it starts at, it's like 6 to 8 or something like that, so, come on down for a good time. That's all I got.
Thank you. Kimberly?
Could you tell me the time again for the Sister City at the Playhouse Arts?
I, I'll forward this to Karen to distribute to the council and everything, but Thursday, June 27th, 6:30 PM.
Great, thanks.
Playhouse, and I'm sure, I'll share this on social media and everything, too, they put together a really nice little flyer, so.
Looking forward to that, as well as the, yeah, I'm gonna be going there. Yeah, I just wanted to say that Mayor Matthews and myself were fortunate to be judges at the Humboldt Lemonade Day this past Saturday, and it was kind of a circle, my daughter, who did it for many, many years in her youth, got to come help me, so that was pretty exciting. It was fun to visit all the local young Arcata entrepreneurs. Valley West had another successful Clean the Sidewalk event this past Sunday as well, so please come join the first Sunday of every month, with the first, next one being July 7th from 9:00 to 11:00 in the morning. And I also attended a city liaison board, as a city of Arcata liaison, board member for the Redwood Region Economic Development Committee, a lone committee meeting this morning, so I'm learning a whole lot and really enjoying this position. And I, and we also had a ribbon cutting at the Redwood Park Playground Improvements Project, so it was a glorious sunny day, weather cooperated, and the playground was filled with children and family, and even the bike pump course had some takers. Our city manager gave me a little tour of that, too. I won't be using it anytime soon, but I'm sure there will be a lot of takers, and that's all I've got.
Okay, so my report is that, from HTA, Humboldt Transit Authority, and one of the things they do every year, which is a national event, is dump the pump, which means you ride the bus that day, which is June 20th, Thursday, June 20th, instead of using your car. And it's, so that is one thing that's happening. And also, during the month of July, there'll be free rides on Arcata Transit System, and then, it's actually always been July. Is it June or July? It's both, okay. I just remember in the past being July, so, so it'll be June and July. So, HTA Systems also have free rides for seniors and children under 17, and that'll be in the month of June, which is now. And the months of July and August, HTA Systems and Arcata Transit will have free rides for seniors and children under 17 also. So, I just wanted to report that. I attended the Trail Summit, and then I happened to be on my way to Eureka, and oh, there's so much work going on in the trail system right now for the county connection between Arcata and Eureka. And also, it looks like our little connection that we've been working on, on Old Arcata Road, is doing really well. There was no one stopping traffic today, so it means it's pretty close. I attended yesterday, I went to the Arcata Fire District and the Arcata Volunteer, well, Arcata, well, it's Arcata Fire Volunteers, they had a meeting, and the meeting was actually discussing their lease. So, the volunteers own the fire station in Arcata, and the fire district leases from them in that facility. So, I just wanted to mention that. It was sort of fun to be in the fire hall, because I remember what it was like in the old days, and I'm talking to some of the firemen that are now, they're captains for one division or another, and they remember the volunteers, when they were volunteers, they'd go out, and then they'd come back, and they'd have a fabulous meal cooked for them, and then they would go home and wait till the next call. So, that was fun to remember some of that, and some of the people that were great cooks and who are no longer with us. One of them was our Public Works Director, Frank Klop. Okay, that takes care of my reports, and so, we have nothing else, so, well, in that portion, and we will go over to early oral communications. The city values your comments, the public comment period allows people to address the council on matters not on the agenda, speakers may speak at only one of the open times for public comment. This early section of public comments is limited to 15 minutes, and speakers are limited to two minutes each. If you prefer to have a full three minutes of time for your public comment, this item should be, can happen at the end of our meeting, which is under item 13, where speakers are granted three minutes. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the agenda, but the council may respond to statements. And there was also, will be time to provide public comments specific to each item when that item is being reviewed by the council. So, here you go now, oh, we've got our first speaker, if you wish to speak, please go.
Thank you, my name is Joanne McGary. I come here today with Mother Earth, because it's really important for me to remind all of us in the community how our earth is in, being deeply affected by many factors, and the presentation about the forest was really important to know how redwood forests sequester carbon so intensely compared to other things. But, the first thing I want to say, because I talk in threes, is that Eureka City Council approved a ceasefire resolution last night unanimously, and it basically is based off of the resolution that our city council approved unanimously on March 6th of this year. I also attended a county board of supervisors meeting where Supervisor Madrone had introduced the same resolution, and it also was passed with one abstention from one supervisor, but no, no votes, and it was also very similar. So, when I talk about history, and it's important to look at history, I want you to know that your action on passing that resolution was very, very important to us and to the world. It does make a difference. And it was followed by these two other agencies, or cities and counties. So, thank you for being the leader in our region on that issue. The second thing is, climate action plan is not yet formulated, but it's time to, for us as a community, to take climate action. And one of the things we really need to do is stop fossil fuel emissions as rapidly as possible. So, I'll speak later about some ideas I have on that, but we really, as a community, must, there's gonna be a heat dome this week, and the temperature's gonna be really high. Third thing is, international city of peace, I really want that, and to have a peace and justice center again in our community, because it's really important for a lot of us. Thank you.
Good evening, Gregory Daggett. Your last council meeting, you had a presentation by Dan Coe, Chris Dart, and I think it was an opportunity to ask a few questions from the standpoint of how he addressed Cal Poly about a year and a half ago, and in that presentation, he was quite clear that Dan Coe is not interested in doing any projects over four stories because of the economics of it, that it doesn't pan out. And he also, at that time, expressed that other developers would not be interested in doing that. So, here we are like a year and a half later, and this is, this is something that I brought up shortly after that presentation, I think a few other community members did, too. So, it seems that we have quite a few council members, and obviously, the Planning Commission that are in favor of seven stories, so it's, I think it's a little bit of a mystery why, why you're still focused on seven stories when economically, you don't have, seem to have anybody interested in that. I think there was a little bit of pushback from a few people that say, said that there are developers out there, but here we are like a year and a half later, and we basically all was overhearing is, there's only Dan Coe to do something like this. So, I guess the question is still out there, why, 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 seven stories is that magic number? And I would also state that there wasn't really, I mean, seems to be some confusion with council members in their discussion with Arcata Fire District. I mean, I think you need to know what the word "no" is, because what I heard from that letter, and also from their presentations, at this point, it's, going over three stories is going to jeopardize their lives, or seriously injure their lives, and if there's residents in a building, and, so every time we build another building, it's just gambling even more. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Craig Johnson, and I live along the 900 block of Bayside Road, and I'm here to give an update on how the improvement is negatively affecting our neighborhood. The houses are between 855 and 991. We've already met with the assistant city manager, or city engineer, who delivered some information and put some Band-Aids on the project, but it seems the project is really delivering some negative effects to our immediate frontage road, and we have seven homes, two of which have historical use of barns in the backyard, or property, and two have shops. And the seven homes also, it's a blue-collar neighborhood, we're all pickup drivers, some of us have multiple. And as we move forward with the progress and being more inclusive to other activities along the roadways, we're, let's not forget about excluding historical activities, and that's ranching, and farming, and some of these other activities, and these other ways that we make a living, right, to be able to come in and out of our neighborhood. And some of the points I want to make are, they're taking some wetland from, far away from our zone, and putting it into our immediate community. We're already hydrologically challenged with our groundwater in that area, now they're gonna bring more into our space. And as we know, grassland is a way of holding carbon in the root system. It's a very secure way of holding it, it's fireproof, and now they're tearing that out and putting in this wetland. They've also stifled off the entrance to our neighborhood and our roadway, and making it very challenging to turn in with a truck and a trailer. They're even gonna remove some of the pavement in our area to make it permeable, because they've added permeable pavement to other areas. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Patricia Buchanan, and I wrote down some comments on the gateway and zoning proposals that represent what people I know think and people I meet at events are talking about. The concerns include the proposed seven-story high-rise, five and seven-story high-rise buildings, damage and death when they're too tall for fire departments, they're often big factors in overbuilding, resulting in empty, unrentable apartments and lower property values. It's true, we need more housing, many say affordable housing, but what does that catchy phrase really mean? Is it the tall high-rises that New York City and other cities built in the past? They turned out to be wildly unpopular, and eventually were torn down. I lived there at the time, and it was a big issue, just like here. It turned out that they weren't really what people wanted. Even China made that mistake, and their economy is suffering for it. And affordable housing for whom? The students and those under certain income, but what about us middle-class folks who don't want to live in a high-rise? The term "community" suggests a feeling of fellowship and shared interests and goals. It would be sad if this community lost its feeling of community, which I think is the reason lots of folks wanted to live here. I don't know how to get it back, but I think it could start here. I would like to suggest that perhaps the feeling of community in a town is I would like to suggest that perhaps the feeling of community in a town is even more important than the issues that seek to divide it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? On Zoom? We do. Our first speaker is Glenn. Go ahead, Glenn. Go ahead, Glenn. There you go.
I'm going to be four. And I just wanted to, on the LU density upzoning issue brought forward by one of the planning commissioners. And I just wanted to say thank you for extending the implementation measure duration to four years instead of just two. I think that's wise. Let's see how the gateway plan pans out before we spread it all over town. So, I just also wanted to note that in the Arcata Union newspaper today, there's a half-page editorial that I think clearly, clearly expresses the concerns of folks like myself who live in the Sunset area and the other four neighborhoods in Arcata that are potentially targeted for upzoning and potentially targeted for four-story or higher buildings in these residential neighborhoods that are currently zoned low-density, such as they are. I encourage you all to take a look at that article. It is an opinion piece, but it is very factual. It traces how this implementation measure came to be included in the general plan and some of the repercussions of keeping it in there. The author of the opinion piece is recommending that it be removed from the general plan, and I would second that. Let's get the gateway plan implemented. Let's see how it pans out. If we, it looks like we need to revisit further densifying the city of Arcata. We can do that at a later date. Yeah, the op-ed piece also includes cautionary notes about the state housing law and how we can create kind of a vicious cycle about densifying sooner than we may need to and then being trapped into a cycle of having to further densify to stay in compliance with the state housing law. So, that's all I have to say. Just thank you again.
Glenn, thank you very much. Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
I appreciate you contacting us. Glenn, is there somebody else at your house that would like to speak? I have your hand raised twice. Well, we'll go to Speaker G. Speaker G, Colwell is not Glenn. Go ahead. All right, we're going to assume you were just logged on from two devices.
Okay.
Oh, no, go ahead. Good.
Is this good?
Yep, that's good. Thank you.
This is Lori Colwell. We've been homeowners in the Sunset neighborhood since
stake in this. I too have recently reread Lisa Brown's opinion piece, this week's Mad River Union. I go along with that implementation measure LU9 should be removed from the general plan. I, I know that a lot of my neighbors, both renters and homeowners, would align with this. I also feel quite strongly that the zoning administrator review threshold should be reduced to stories. So, let's get the facts, folks. Residential low zoning is defined as two units, minimum to 7.25 units maximum per acre. David Loyah has told us directly that here in the Sunset, we were so dense with infill and ADUs, both permitted, non-permitted, that we're about 29 units per acre. That's a huge difference. Try to bike through the Sunset area. We have two-way streets that are not two ways. You have to yield to, traffic is very dangerous to walk or ride bikes. We are very, very dense. We have multiple streets where it's bumper-to-bumper parking on the streets because we've got rentals where maybe five, six people are living and they all have a car. I think I've got 30 seconds. Anyway, quality of life. We were bought in with the assurance that this was low residential density.
I'm going to have to cut you off. Thank you very much for your comments. I appreciate it. All right, we have no other, oh, yep, one more. Go ahead, Colin.
Good evening. This is Colin Fisk with CRTP. Just a point of process. It appears that the general plan is on the agenda this evening and I, but several people have been commenting on it during this comment period. And I just wanted to clarify, when is the appropriate time to comment on it?
It would be during that item. Thank you, Colin. Okay. There we are. We're finished with this. So, now, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. So, all matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There's no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, that item to be removed for separate discussion. So, we have quite a few items on the consent calendar. A is approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of May 9th. B is approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of May 15th. C is the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of May 22nd. D is the bi-weekly report on disbursements. C is adopt ordinance number 1568 and ordinance of city of, city of council of the city of Arcata amending the mobile home rent stabilization regulations and consent to waive reading the text and read by title only. F, adopt resolution number 234-58, approve the fiscal year 2024/25 annual report on Measure A special tax for all non-tax exempt parcels and directing that said fee to be collected through property tax rolls for the fiscal year 2024/25. G, amend the existing bike share program contract with Tandem Mobility LLC to extend the term for two years ending May 15th, 2026 and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. H, award a contract in the amount of $1,348,570.13 to GHD, Inc., to complete the plan and specifications and estimate phase of the US 101 Sunset Avenue Interchange Improvement Project and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. I, adopt this successor memorandum of understanding between the city of Arcata and International Union of Operating Engineers Local Number Three for July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025 and authorize the mayor to execute and adopt resolution number 234-55, a resolution of the city council of the city of Arcata amending the class and pay resolution for International Union of Operating Engineers Local Number Three. J, adopt resolution number 234-53, a resolution of the city council of the city establishing and authorizing settlemental compensation and benefits for management and confidential employees to reflect revisions and additions and adopt resolution number 234-54, a resolution to the city council of the city of Arcata amending class and pay resolution mid-management, confidential and appointed employees to reflect a 5% salary increase effective full, first full pay period after approval and future increases between 2025-2026 and years 2026 to 2027. Okay, adopt resolution number 23459 proclaiming June is the lesbian, gay, bisexual gender, transgender, queer, and pride month in the city of Arcata and authorize the Rainbow Pride flag to be flown on the flagpole at the Arcata City Hall during the month of June. L, continue the gateway area and gateway code item to July 17, 2024. Just a sec. Okay, I think that's it for those. And I do believe we could have a motion to that effect. Do you, actually, do you have the next page?
Don't have to take comment.
Yeah, but the changes in the agenda, we've added time at this moment for public comment on the consent calendar. Okay. So, if there are members of the public wanting to comment on any of the items that are on the consent calendar, this is your chance to do so. Please come to the podium or raise your virtual hand.
And should we poll items before that so people who want to maybe comment on those items know? I don't know. But I do want to pull Item H. And I would also just like to comment on Item K, but not poll it.
And I was wondering which way to do this. I'm just reading my directions. Yeah, it's all good. And you can choose to do it either way. We had it set it up for public comment first. So, if somebody from the public comment wanted to ask to poll an agenda item, that then you would do that after. But either way, yeah.
Yeah, I do want to pull H. And then also, I just wanted to recognize Item K and just say that I think it's exciting that we are recognizing our queer community in this way. And, yeah, happy pride month.
So, do we have a possibility for adoption of the agenda of this consent calendar minus H?
So moved.
I second. Okay, thank you. All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, it carries. And we will remove Item H.
Yeah, Item H is just a large, exciting thing that's going on. I had the usual Arcata. I was sitting with, I was passenger to my friend in his car the other day and we did the, no, you go, no, uh, uh, like whole thing at the intersection. And my friend said, I can't wait for there to be a roundabout here. And I was like, phew, that feels a little good. But I just wanted to kind of get an update of progress of this and kind of timelines and what this step looks like in the total of this project. And then I know some folks had comments in the community and wanted to comment on this.
Good evening, council, members of public and the staff. The item in front of you is the next phase of the project, Sunset and Elkwood Improvement. In February of early this year, we gave a presentation. At that time, we approved the environmental document for the project, so which was the planning and environmental phase. So, with this contract, we will be moving to the design phase. So, once we awarded, we'll be working on the design of the project. Also, early this year, we applied for construction funding and we are hoping to hear sometime mid-year and we will know if we get the money for construction or not.
We do, that's for the general plan discussion later. Okay. So, go, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, no, that's like an overall update, like, you know, where we are on the, currently, this is only for design. We did receive some comments during the planning phase in February. We will be addressing those comments in the design. And there is, within the design, we will be having a public meeting where we will be presenting the comments that we received during the planning. They will be incorporated and they will, it will be presented at the public meeting. So, people will have chance to provide feedback on the input that they provided.
So, I think one of the concerns is that there is comments that things have to be looked at during this planning phase, but maybe they figured they weren't going to be looked at. And so, it indicates that this is the design phase and not the environmental, so.
That is correct. So, we did receive the comments that will be addressed in the design phase. So, we had no money to do the work between February and June. So, now, we will have a consultant, our project team onboard. Once we have the contract, then we will be evaluating the design with the comments we received.
Thank you. So, we have anyone that would like to make public comment on this?
Yes, council members. Something I feel strongly about. At the February meeting, the council asked for certain improvements. I think those improvements should be included in the contract that was from September 2022. And to award a new contract at this stage without having those improvements in place sends the wrong message. The one big thing, of course, is the bike paths, not wanting to be shared with pedestrians. But there's other items also. There is a video and transcription on arcataone.com if you'd like to refresh this. There are quotes from the council members. There's a real question whether the flashing yellow lights, the called rectangular rapid flashing beacons, will be enough to cause cars to stop. This is a major safety question. The flashing lights on K Street don't seem to stop the cars. I think Councilman, Councilmember Akinsalarzar could tell us more about that. All it takes is for one car to sail through that flashing yellow light and there would be a big problem for the walker or pedestrian. To have a public meeting to look at the design when it comes later, in my experience, will be too late. The engineers will say, this can't be fixed now. We've already spent too much money. That's a real question that we have for the city engineer. On a very personal note, when I was 21 years old, I hit a child who was riding a bicycle while I was driving a pickup truck. It was absolutely not my fault. I was going about 20 miles an hour. I swerved and braked. The child wasn't hurt. He had the wind knocked out of him. It was fortunate. But the kid was only doing what kids do. No one was doing anything wrong and this happened. 25 years ago, when the Windsong subdivision was built, there are no stop signs at James Road and Bussade Road corner. And I fought for those stop signs. I filed an appeal of the project, making those stop signs as a condition of approval for the project. Because in my imagination, I saw a kid getting hit on a bike at that corner with, it's right at the entrance or exit of Windsong. So, I'm talking to you here for one reason, to keep someone from getting hurt. And there's, to me, there's no question that this design can be improved. There's, I'm not saying it's a terrible design. I'm not saying that at all. But there are definite ways to improve it. I've written five or six articles on Arcata One with pictures. All you have to do is look at the pictures and see what I'm talking about. I don't think this should be a consent calendar item. I think it should be a discussion. It should be agendas. But here we are. It's up to you what to do. What I request is a, setting a date for when we see the improvements that you've already asked for. It could be two months from now, four months from now, but not a year from now or eight months from now when it's really too late to make the changes. That's it. Thanks very much for your work.
Good evening again. I attended the Cal Poly meeting and I'm sure a city engineer remembered me that evening. I was, I was actually very nice and didn't give you too hard of a time. I've actually been supportive of this, but I'm having a little bit of second thoughts from the standpoint of, one, from the safety standpoint, you know, I, you know, you, how it is right now, you come to a full stop and you basically, you know, it's kind of like the kindergarten of driver's ed. You wait your turn, you're stopped, you look for bicyclists, you wait for the other car if they've got there first. So, in this case, you know, I was like visualizing, you know, my experience in Valencia, Spain, and how Europeans are used to roundabouts. But, you know, I, I'm just got a lot of concern from the standpoint of drivers in the U.S. from data that I've had since that meeting. And Americans are just like not too, too good in this. Europeans have stick shift manuals, so they're not holding their cell phone while they're going through these roundabouts. But Americans are, are looking down at their cell phones, probably about 30% of them. And you got, you got a lot of moving elements with other vehicles, bicyclists. So, I, I am not sure that with all this money that's going to be spent on this, that the results are that you're going to actually have a safer environment. My, my feeling right now is, is that maybe that's not going to be the case at all. And so, that's why I'm having second thoughts on it just from my own experience of what I see on the streets of Arcata, from the fact that, I don't know, Humboldt County is number one in DUIs in the nation as far as fatalities. And, you know, I, I see a lot of cars that aren't the ones, the folks that have been killed, but just their cars have been smashed from somebody crossing over the, you know, bicycle lane and hitting a parked car on the street. So, that's where my concerns are coming from. And also, I mean, Fred had a personal note. I had a personal note to my own experience. When I was 16, I was hit by a When I was 16, I was hit by a car and I went headfirst through the windshield. The bicycle went under the vehicle and the car ran it over. So, I mean, I felt like, you know, that was one life that I, I gave up. But, I mean, I, I lived. And then, then at 19, when I was in college, bicycle lane two, and I was, I was hit by a car. And I don't blame these people at all. I don't hold anything against them. It's just that, it's just a painted line on the street. And we all appreciate bicycle lanes, but they are not going to save you. So I would also say that this is an expensive project. The state of California is, I think, depending on who you believe, maybe $75 billion deficit. So maybe this is a good time.
Hello to council and staff. James Becker, just so, I'll be pretty brief about it, but I am a bicyclist. I tend to, you know, take the lane and things like roundabouts. But I realize it's important with the shared areas that space is made available. And I'm just wondering with the conversation about possibly eliminating the parking on the south side of the bridge, and I know that's a Caltrans area and it's completely up to them. And if that conversation came any further, and if we're looking at an old map there or not, a couple other thoughts with that in mind would be room for, much more room for a shared path, at least in a large portion on that south side for both the pedestrians and also for the cyclists. On the other side, there is presently a lane that somebody, if they're taking the lane and then coming out and to ride through instead of going across when you're basically heading west towards the skate park. I'm just wondering if that's going to be a protected lane, you know, either with some ballards or something while they're in there. Because obviously you have your exits and your entrances, which are of a concern. And my third thought and import, also a Caltrans decision, but the encouragement for some level of flashing lights on the off-ramps that really kind of escalate the slowdown. Like you see that sometimes coming off of freeways where they end into towns. And I think that could be really important to really encourage, you know, it's time to get down to, you know, five miles an hour really quick in case you do come to that, that yield sign and you're having a, suddenly seeing somebody come into view. And those are just the additional thoughts I wanted to add to this. I'm taking advantage of somewhat normally be this time for this, but I'm not sure if I've missed it in the future, so I thought I would state that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? Is there anyone on Zoom? There is. Colin, go ahead.
Hello, again, Colin Fisk with CRTP. Just wanted to say that CRTP's position on this hasn't changed since the last presentation. And we raised at that time a few concerns, notably the need to separate bike and pedestrian facilities, the need for greater traffic calming designs to ensure yielding at the, yielding to pedestrians and bicyclists approaching the roundabouts, as well as the elimination of slip lanes, which can allow traffic to proceed too fast outside of the roundabout. And based on conversations with City Engineer Katry, I understand that all those concerns are being considered and hopefully will be addressed. And if they are, we would greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other online public comments for this item.
Thank you very much. Is there discussion at the council or is there a motion to approve item H?
I don't know if I necessarily have discussion, but I guess to point, point the question towards Natura or just suggest strongly that, you know, as we go forward approving this, obviously to take, you know, the comments and discussion that the council had when we previously saw this item and discussed it and make sure those ideas are incorporated into the initial design. I know usually we'll see like, what, 50%, 90%, you know, all the different percentages along the way, you know, until we get a complete design. But to the, the point that a commenter made, yeah, we do, you know, it, it does happen. We get down the line and say, oh, my gosh, but now we have to go fix all of this. And that would be so expensive to go back and change these plans. But to, to really come forward with that forethought, just on those few items. I know we discussed, yeah, looking at like the separated bike lane and then also like, I think one of, like the auxiliary lane going into the roundabout was a piece of that discussion as well. And just really focusing on, you know, those measures that are going to protect pedestrian and bike access and also really work to slow cars coming off the freeway, so. And with that comment, I will just also make a motion to approve item H.
Thank you.
Put that on the table.
Kimberly?
Yeah, I've been reading a lot, so correct me if I'm wrong, but there was, there was conversation in the staff report about possibility, possibility of eliminating the slip lanes?
We will consider that. At this time, I cannot tell you definitely we will do that, definitely we'll consider. When we received the public comments in February, main comments were have a separate bike lane, have more traffic calming measures like a raised crosswalk and elimination of a slip lane. We have looked into the design, or at least for the concept level. We can potentially add separate bike lane, have a raised crosswalk, add rapid flashers at the crosswalk, but totally eliminating slip lane, we are still considering that. It's not for sure at this point, so. So what we could, I could suggest is in, in the month of July or August, we can do a small staff report just to respond to the comments, what we received in February and how those are addressed. We will have a concept level drawing. We can show it and then we'll show you the improvement that we are proposing. And then we will move to the full design.
Okay, and you made a motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion has carried. Thank you very much. So now we're going to go on to the Arcata School District regarding developer fee considerations. And our city manager is going to introduce the, this next topic.
All right. Yeah, I would just like to introduce Arcata School District Superintendent Luke Byseeker. I hope I got that last name pronounced correctly. If not, please feel free to correct me. And please feel free to introduce your team.
Thank you. Sorry, yeah, my last name's a little bit of a doozy, so being in education, I'm used to that with various students and whatnot. Want to thank our board president, Brian Hudgens, for being here in the back. He can, he can wave. And then our chief business official, Travis West, is also joining me. So super appreciate the council for having us to talk about developer, the developer fee consideration. Thank you for your service to the community. I also want to extend our thanks to city staff who've been helping us throughout some of the process, giving us some numbers, as well as the other support that we receive on an ongoing basis. I've been with the district for about six years, and I've really appreciated the responsiveness of, you know, police staff in terms of both emergency response and helping with some of our safety planning. Appreciate Ms. Deemer in that regard as well. I attended a community input meeting at Fuente Nuevo a couple of years ago or a year ago. And so that was really well handled by the city. So appreciate that support and that ongoing relationship. There is, I think it's here. Do I need to do the view present?
Yeah, or go to slideshow from beginning?
Yeah, this was my opening Pleasant Trees slide. I think I covered that. So just to give you guys a little bit of an overview about the district. So primarily, the district's responsible for two school sites. Arcata Elementary, the old Sunset site, which serves about 260 students currently TK through five, and Sunny Bray Middle School, serving about 250 students, sixth through eight. We also authorize four independent charter schools. Coastal Grove, which is the old Bloomfield site with about 225 students, TK through eight. Fuente Nuevo, which is a Spanish immersion school. Coastal Grove is a Waldorf school. Union Street Charter School with about 100 students. K five is a, focuses on arts and small class sizes. And then Redwood Coast Montessori School, which has recently expanded to a high school. They are all independent charter schools. They have their own governing boards, but we authorize them and have some oversight responsibilities. And then, so you can see, we're kind of a unique area in that we have so many school districts up here. And then Arcata is not an exception to that with Jacoby Creek to the south and then Pacific Union to the north, Blue Lake to the east. And so we've got kind of weird borders, as you can see there with our little appendage sticking off toward McKinleyville. And then a lot of that area outside of city limits, though, is pretty sparsely populated. So more geographic than it actually is in terms of student population. Some district highlights, again, I know we're here to talk about developer fees, so I might just touch on a couple of things for people that, who might take advantage of other schools in the area. So small class sizes, robust elective programming, a lot of that's supported by a parcel tax that the community supports. We're actually looking to renew that for the third time in November. And so extending that over another period of, I think, eight years. So that supports, it allows us to have small straight grade classes at the elementary school. We've recently expanded our Spanish immersion and instruction offerings at the middle school, so making us a natural feeder for Fuente Nuevo Charter School in addition to the elementary school. History of academic success. So we're really proud of student achievement. We are what the state considers a concentration school, meaning we have over 55% unduplicated count students. Most of us, what that really means is we have a pretty significant low-income population that we serve, 60 to 70%, which is roughly on, on par with the state as a whole, as well as Humboldt County as a whole. And so, you know, we like to tout that academic success. There are other schools and programs with some really great scores, and we don't disparage them in any way. But sometimes they have more selected student populations. We really pride ourselves on serving all students. Prevention and intervention staffing, again, some of that's just, you know, trying to make sure we're supporting our students, especially those that are at risk. We have a community eligibility food services program, which means that we provide lunch and breakfast for all students at no cost. And then we have a robust expanded learning program. We have, you know, extensive summer programming, intercession days, as well as, you know, nine hours of supervision throughout, you know, before-school, after-school program. So a lot of supports for our families. And now the moment you've all been waiting for, the dreaded developer fee conversation. You know, nobody wants to increase fees or impose fees, you know. We're extremely grateful for the community support that we received, the ongoing parcel tax, as well as the recent passage of Measure B and some other previous bond measures that have allowed us to modernize both Arcata Elementary School and Sunny Bray Middle School. The most recent one, Measure B, which just passed a couple of months ago, is primarily going to focus on modernization of the Bloomfield site where Coastal Grove is, is housed. So really appreciate that support. We've kind of been looking at our population dynamics going back a couple of years. In April 2022, I think I was sharing in the kind of earlier with one of the city staff members that kind of started when we received a flyer about the Creekside project, just kind of alerting us, hey, you know, there's this development. So appreciate the city noticing us, working with us, keeping us informed. And that got me to come to like a, I'm in a blank on it. Planning, a planning committee meeting. And ultimately, you know, they were, at that time, they were thinking, oh, you'll have 30 to 40 additional school-aged children. And that's exciting. We're, we love to serve children. That's our business. But, you know, I think that project ended up not working out, but it got us kind of really thinking, especially as other developments have come along, the Gateway Project, other, other, you know, potential developments. We need to be ahead of this. School facilities, the process for building, the planning, all the phases is time-consuming and is quite pricey. It's shocking, there's a lot of sticker shock when you start seeing the, the numbers. But there's been an ongoing process. So appreciate working with city staff regarding some population growth models. Following some initial conversations, we initiated a developer fee study. We actually went through a process of imposing developer fees. And then we extended an exemption period, not wanting to surprise community members who had built permits in process, wanting to have time to work with city staff, and then also wanting to make sure we done our due diligence and like, you know, get a second study. Is this the right thing for the community at this time? Is this a good, is, was the initial study effective and appropriate? And then we've had some preliminary conversations with the city of Arcata regarding fee collection. We ended up conducting a second developer fee study. And then just most recently in May 2024, the board took no action on the second study, but action was taken to rescind the previously imposed but never collected fees. Developer fees, this is a really wordy slide, so I probably won't read it. But the idea, the idea from developer, of developer fees is basically that if you have a new development and it's going to bring in a significant population, that you have a fee in place so that you're ready and you have facilities to absorb that significant growth in school-aged children. Seem fair? I'm getting the nod from Travis, so I'm going to call that good. So some projections. I thought it might be good to share kind of the results of the two studies that we've had conducted. So that, I mentioned those early conversations with city staff. And these, I think these roughly informed both studies. So appreciate city staff working with both King Consulting and then later Schoolworks. 320 to 430 additional households with school-aged children by 2030. And then the two studies kind of looked at things, one did it was over 20 years and one was over five years. The one over 20 years was looking at about 152 students. And then about $12 million in facility needs. The second developer fee study, about 55 students over the next five years. So those, those are actually fairly comparable in terms of their projections. And then about 1.7 million in need over that, that five-year period for those 55 students. Our initial reasons for imposing developer fees were kind of twofold. Ensure sufficient classroom space for school-aged children. We certainly don't want to be blind to the fact that there might be growth and we might have, need to absorb additional students. New construction or reconstruction to accommodate approximately 150 more students over the next 20 years. You know, so that was a little bit scary for us, 150 kids. That would be hard to accommodate that in our current facilities for sure, especially with the community prioritizing and supporting things like small class sizes and straight-grade classes. There's also incentives from the state for us to be able to qualify for financial hardship with the Office for Public School Construction. In order to access and have priority for some state funds, they require us to impose developer fees to the maximum extent justified. Our current considerations, you know, with the, with the most recent study, you know, modest growth, 55 students over the next five years, you know, that doesn't have us scared from a facility standpoint, whereas 150 was definitely a little bit alarming. Like that's something we have to be ahead of and we need to think about, but it took away some urgency for us. And then no longer concerned with qualifying for financial hardship with the Office of School Construction. I guess the, the primary reason for that would be that, well, I guess that's also, or twofold already, but I'm going to say it again, there's two reasons for that. One is that we, we qualified for financial hardship and then we actually received funding for a TK facilities expansion because the state has recently increased the age range for transitional kindergarten-age students. And so we received funding and then also with the passage of Measure B, having a bond in place where we're receiving funding, there's not the same incentive in terms of seeking financial hardship funds from the state. We wouldn't have the same priority or the same funding access that we would qualify for. With significant growth projected, the district needs to continue to monitor and assess the need for developer fees. School construction's expensive, moving through the various planning. It's DSA approval and construction phases take significant time. You know, we're looking to add one classroom and it's, by the end of it, it's probably going to be close to $2 million over the course of like two to three years. I imagine the city sees similar things when you're looking, when there's building projects. It's just expensive and time-consuming. Next steps. So those are going to be determined by the Board of Trustees. At this point, there's not a specific plan or timeline to bring back a resolution regarding the imposition of developer fees. There is going to be an additional conversation, probably at our June meeting. We're, we're also going to be consulting with legal counsel about some concerns that have been raised. But I know that our board's super thoughtful and they're just wanting to make sure they do the, the right thing for students. You know, we don't want to, you know, seek funds we don't need, but at the same time, we want to be appropriately responsible in terms of facility planning for the future. Any, and then I, there were a couple of questions in the, in the letter from the mayor. Kind of talked about the difference between developer fees and parcel tax and a general obligation bond. And I think that, you know, currently we have an active parcel tax that we're looking, I mentioned renewing. That one is currently, the community is supporting small class sizes in an elective program. And so at this point, that's kind of what the community has identified. And, you know, we anticipate asking to continue to support that. And then a general obligation bond was just supported, and that will actually help with some of our facility needs. And then I mentioned kind of the philosophy around developer fees. A lot of times with a general obligation bond, these aren't hard and fast rules, they're more like philosophies, I guess. With a general obligation bond, maybe you're doing a, a modernization of your school or you're investing in a, a new asset that's going to be great for the community and the whole school. Whereas developer fees are typically tied to like anticipated growth and additional facilities. And when I use the words like reconstruction, you know, our classic example of that is at Sunny Bray, we have some old locker rooms that maybe are not used to their full capability. But if we were to reconstruct them, we could turn them into a classroom space or we could add a new classroom. So new construction and reconstruction would be appropriate use of developer fees. So new construction and reconstruction would be appropriate use of developer fees. And then, you know, the process to collect and calculate fees, that was something, you know, a process we started with the city of Arcata and would certainly need to continue. I think that, on one hand, it sounds simple enough, it's a pretty easy calculation in terms of price per square footage, but just in terms of having that that process so that we can issue receipts. You know, and sometimes I think with the county, in the past, the county had processed fees and collected, I think more and more, they're wanting districts to do that on their own. And so that'd be an ongoing conversation. I think unfortunately, when the district imposes fees, that puts the county, or the city in a tough spot in terms of the best way to work with us. And, you know, we certainly want to be flexible there and be a good team player and partner in that process, if when that happens. Again, at this point, there are not fees in place, and we don't have a timeline for bringing back a resolution, but we are going to have some conversations around next steps. And, you know, I don't want to be too speculative, you know, ultimately that'll be a board decision in terms of what that's, that looks like. A natural timeline could be like every other year. The state, I don't know if you could comment on that, what, how do they call that? They adjust the maximum amount of fee that you can collect on a biannual basis. So they just recently did that in January 2024, so January 2026 might be a natural time to look at that. If we see a big spike in enrollment, that might be another kind of trigger for us to take action. If we're not in a spot where we're worried about financial hardship, there's more flexibility, I guess, from a district perspective, and maybe we don't need to impose the maximum fee allowable. Because that, the maximum fee allowable piece, I mean, one, it's non arbitrary, so to that extent, it's nice, but if, you know, if it's more money than we need, that's not what we're looking to do. There are some, I think throughout the state, around the time we started looking at this, our, our school board, a number of members that are attended, California School Board, so board member training, so trustee training, and about 95% of districts throughout the state, they shared, collect developer fees. So it's pretty common. But I also know districts that have started collecting them and then removed the fee because they were kind of piling up, and you really can use them in this narrow space of new facility or reconstruction. And so you're, you know, we don't need a stockpile of funds taking away from the, you know, taking out of people's pockets. And so, you know, we're trying to be prudent and careful in terms of our responsibility there on both regards. So I talked a lot in a short amount of time, maybe a little amped up, but I'd love to take some questions if you guys have any.
Well, thank you very much for coming, and I appreciate you being here. And do we have any comments or questions from the council?
I must have misunderstood you. This is interesting for me because I am on a charter school board, not in that district. And so I thought you said that this resolution was going to come back in the June meeting, but then later on you said, no, it's not. So we're just going to be having conversations? And would you be able to update the council then, what actually transpires at that June meeting?
Yes, absolutely. One of the things that happened at our last meeting is the board took action on a related item regarding the elimination of the previously imposed fees.
Right, for March.
And there's, there's an equal dignity rule I was advised of, where we should probably do it by a formal resolution, so we'll be bringing that back, probably just as a consent item because they already voted on it. And then we will do a follow-up notification. City staff will recognize it because we've sent it several times already.
Twice as nice.
But we'll let them know that we're not, probably not collecting fees at that point. Again, I can't, you know, I can't speak for the board if something was to change. And then we'll probably have a conversation around our next steps with the second study that was done, and what our timeline is and where we're going from there. With each, each time we do a study and we consider a resolution to impose fees, there's noticing requirements and some public stuff that has to happen. And so, you know, our plan is not to do that for the June board meeting. And so in terms of our noticing process and stuff, if we were to bring this back, there has to be 10 business days of noticing, and so that way nobody is surprised. And, you know, that's not our goal. Even, even in thinking this far ahead, I think there was some sentiment at one of our board meetings that, you know, a lot of times it's a 30, is it a 30 day or a 60 day period to impose the fees?
Sixty.
There's a 60 day period to impose the fees, but if there's somebody who already has like a permit, building permit in process, you know, there's parts of that that don't feel good, I think, that's come out in conversation. It would be nice to have a big enough runway where, you know, you're not wanting to surprise people, but you're wanting to be far enough out ahead of it, so that also that you can ensure appropriate facilities, you know, should we have growth. And that, you know, I think there's also that interplay with Cal Poly Humboldt and students and housing, you know, I think Arcata's numbers in terms of housing and students per household are probably a little lower because we're, you know, there's a college town element to that where it might look a little bit different. And so that's, you know, a lot of those projections are prognostications, so we don't, we don't know for sure, and so I think we're taking a little more time to look at that.
I don't have any questions for you guys, but thank you for being here, and just, I think this is important, whether or not, you know, you guys are waiting on the board and they've, are not passing it, but whether or not, you know, to be in that conversation with us, because we all have to work together and be in the same town and make sure, you know, everything is working for all parties involved, and schools are, you know, really community institutions. So thank you guys for being here and presenting and just keeping this conversation open. So I appreciate it.
So I wanted to bring up one thing, and I did send that to you, is that I understand that SB 937 allows not upfront developer fees, but after a building is occupied to pay the fees. And so I'm assuming your attorney will look into that and see because, and maybe that is to encourage housing in California, and when they're occupied, they'll have income coming in, and so they figure that that's a time to put the fees together. I would assume that could be figured out and worked without too much trouble, but I'm not sure, you know, how you would collect. It's easier to collect before than after, but I understand this bill says they defer until it's occupied, so I would definitely check into that. And that's SB 937.
Yeah, I appreciate.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stillman sharing, coming to our last board meeting and speaking, and then also sharing that with us. Yeah, that was my first thought, too, was just the enforcement or collection if you delay, but being able to keep prices down for, you know, trying to create affordable housing upfront. At the same time, yeah, so I think we'll continue to monitor that. It's my understanding that's still in process, so that's not law yet, but if that becomes law, that'll be interesting. You know, the other thing I didn't mention, we also, we have some students on interdistrict transfer out of the district, and so one thing we're sensitive to is with Cal Poly Humboldt growth or other growth, it's possible that some students who might be attending like Jacoby Creek or Pacific Union, if they have growth, they might not be able to serve some students. And so we might get hit with like this double whammy of growth within the district, as well as other like outlying districts not having the capacity to serve some students that might go there now. And so we might have more in and then get more yet pushed in, I guess, or back to us, which again, we're excited about, we just want to make sure we have the facilities for them.
So thank you very much. And the one thing I would say, and I think about this for years now, is that, is there any way to do a consolidation of like Pacific Union and, and the Arcata, you know, district? And I can just bring that up, and I know everyone just tears their hair out, I think, no, we'd like being individual and having this and that, but I just wanted to put that forward, because it seems like in Arcata, those would probably be a natural fit for us. So thank you for accepting that comment.
Yeah.
And I appreciate you coming tonight, and thank you for waiting. So I think we should take a five minute break.
Can we take public comment on this item first?
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
Just get through this item.
Is there any public comment on this item?
I've always been confused about developer fees for schools because it's not very much money. It's, the current rate is $5.17 a square foot. So for a 600 square foot apartment that amounts to $3,100 as a one-time fee, if there were 500 units built in Arcata over a 20-year period, that adds up to one and a half million dollars, or for eight hundred square foot average, about $2 million, but it's only $80,000 or $100,000 a year. I'm sure, you know, any money is good money, I'm not arguing that, but it seems like $100,000 doesn't go very far for a school system. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't hear in the presentation actually what the amount of money would be on, on these different scenarios, whether it was the developer fee, and so I don't know whether, we don't know that, or that's a little vague. And, I mean, we have a lot of, you know, fees that have come up, and generally the city council always seems to, I think they have a pretty good track record of 100% of approving these things. But I would also like just point out that, you know, it was just this last week, again, another article in New York Times bringing up this subject matter that, I think they said California was the most expensive in the nation from the standpoint of developer fees. It was just, you know, getting into the whole housing, why things weren't being built here, and I don't think it was even close, I think we're four times higher than the second place one. So, you know, you just gotta keep all that in perspective. And I would bet that you're gonna approve this, but it just seems to be that you have a goal of affordable housing, but we just keep on adding this fee, this fee, this fee, this fee. So I would also point out, on the standpoint, you know, we have a lot of seniors in our community, and I think quite often when people have these ideas of, you know, needing more money, they may be in a position themselves of having a job that's pretty well paid job for, you know, Humboldt County probably, let's for example. And a lot of these people that are homeowner owners that are, maybe bought their houses like, you know, 40, 30 years ago, and, you know, they're living on their social security. So when you start adding all these extra things, it just almost forces them to sell their houses, and that was part of this article, too, from the standpoint of, they weren't directly going after California on that aspect, but it was other states where, you know, taxes could go up quite a bit. In California, they're restricted a little bit. So there was some pretty emotional stories from, from people that were being forced out, especially in states like Montana, where I think in one, I think it was Boise, where the cost went up 75% for housing in, in one year. And so people that weren't going to get their chance to buy a house because, you know, Californians and folks that, you know, are coming to their state that had cash. So, you know, you gotta keep all that in part of the equation. So it's, it just doesn't seem like we're doing the right things if we're going to have affordable housing, because the costs are just, keep on going up for everything, you know, materials, labor, fees, and that was all part of that article. Thank you.
Thank you. So before we take a five minute break, I just want to mention a couple of things on our agenda that will not be happening tonight, because we don't have a full council or at least four members. But if you want to leave, you can. Oh, okay, go ahead.
Just if I could have a chance to respond about the fees, part of the reason I didn't include the exact price tag in the slide is because we've done two different studies, and at this point, we imposed one fee and then we're eliminating it, and then the other one hasn't been approved. And so it's a little bit confusing to float multiple numbers out there. But the most recent study was looking at about $3.10 per square foot for residential, and that's because there's an assumption that we would only have an entitlement to 60% of the fee, with the high school district having the other 40% of the fee, which matches roughly, I think, the number that was mentioned. And so the reality is, you hate to make construction more costly for families and developers, but construction is also extremely expensive for schools, and so finding that balance, and, you know, at this point, you know, we're taking a little bit of a wait and see approach.
Well, thank you. Is there anything else? Then I'll let you depart. And thank you very much for coming, and for your chair for coming also. Thank you. So I just wanted to mention before we take a five minute break, that we have a couple of things on our agenda we will not be able to discuss tonight, because we do not have at least four council members present. And so one of them is under Old Business, is Place Transitional, Transactional Use Tax Measure on the ballot. We will not be discussing that this evening. And under New Business, we have Adopt Resolution Number 234-57, calling for a general municipal election to be held November 5th, 2024, and Consider Appointing a Subcommittee to Draft the Arguments in Favor of the Transactional Use Tax Measure. That will not be happening tonight either, just in case anyone's here for those items, they don't have to stay. So thank you, and I would like to take a five minute break. Well, thank you for staying with us. And we're going to go on to, I mentioned to us, and I'll mention it again, under old business, number A, we have eliminated this evening because we do not have four people present. And we will go to B, which is adopt amended resolution number 234-43, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata waiving 180 day waiting period for Calpers, a new agent for Danielle DeMello, to begin post-retirement employment, government code number 7522.56 and 21224. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Vice Mayor and Councilwomen. I bring this back for adoption by this council. It's an amended resolution based on requirements from Calpers to change the title of the position and to change the salary. Those are the only two changes in the amended item. So now I would move for adoption.
Well, thank you. Are there any comments from the council or questions? All right. Do we have any members of the public wanting to comment on this item? Okay, well, let's entertain a motion then, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt amended resolution number 234-43.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is C, consider adoption of the general plan comprehensive's update with the exceptions of the Gateway area plan. And would you like to update us, please?
Yeah, just briefly, this is a continuation from your May 29 meeting. I have up on the monitor here the topics that you outlined at your May 29 meeting and the four topics at the bottom here are topics that you did not get to, that you would continue to this meeting. And so I will continue to take notes and answer any questions that you might have. I think you have, you have the com now, though. I did want to make one note that I wanted to make sure that I captured this last one correctly, LU1F. When I went and looked at it, I was confused as to why this was an item. So just want to double check on that, make sure I got that correct.
Okay, well, let me start with loud cars. So when I was reading the, this, it's on page 6-24. Well, anyway, it's under the, let me see what part it's, under traffic noise, health and safety. It's under health and safety. And there's a world of noise. And it starts out with firearms and it goes down to heavy breathing, well, human breathing, not heavy breathing, just human breathing. But nevertheless, I thought possibly in there somewhere we could put loud cars because we've had public testimony on that. And when I was on the plaza not recent, recently, I noticed that there was a car that had really loud duly's on it. So that's why I brought it up. And I don't know where it would go, maybe under snowmobiles or chainsaws or heavy trucks or, not too sure what area.
Where are the snowmobiles in Arcata?
Or, well, that's what they have, busy urban streets, blender with ice alarm clock. It's in that section somewhere.
I'll ask our consultants to inform us as to where on the decibel chart the loud cars fall.
Can I just ask a general process question before we get too deep in this? Can we take public comment before we dig into all these topics, just in case there's other topics we want to bring up from comment?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone wishing to speak?
And everybody's been so patient, so.
Okay, we do have a speaker.
Well, loud cars, I wonder about this subject matter. Have we talked about this in the past a little bit? I appreciate you want to put the language in there, but where I think we're lacking is in the action department, you know, because I've been talking about this for two years. And when I had a conversation with Karen with this recently, she informed me that nothing is being done about this. So, I mean, what else can I say other than, you know, this is a big subject matter for a lot of people from the standpoint of not only in our community, but throughout the California and the U.S. And I think you've gotten lots of information from me on this. And so what's the problem with Arcata police that they can't afford a little bit of resources? Because, you know, the boys out there with their loud exhausts got the message they can do whatever they want. And they get louder and louder because, you know, they personally tell me that they're not going to do anything. They, I've had a conversation and they were like laughing, are you serious? You think the city of Arcata is going to do anything? You think the state of Arcata, the California is going to do anything? They're not going to do anything. And you know what? Those guys are right. Nothing has happened from this area. So we seem to have an annual report that we filed. And in that annual report, we filed that, you know, we're monitoring this, we're taking action, we're taking action on air quality. And I don't think anything's being done, you know? It's just you're filing these reports to the state and making it sound like everything's okay. And it's not okay. And I'm just, I mean, it's pretty frustrating. It's not, this is not a complicated issue. And if you can't even deal with this, it makes me wonder about all the other issues that are much more complicated than this. So, you know, we had our police officer here when Meredith, I appreciate Meredith asking that that evening, and he said, noise, the parties? And, you know, I had a conversation with him like two weeks before that. Believe me, I went into all the details of it. So it seems to be something to avoid, that they just don't want to do it from, I don't know, the standpoint of, you know, what we've seen in the last couple of years with law enforcement, they're just kind of running away from all these situations. They don't want to give tickets for speeding. I mean, I've read about that in San Francisco, they call it Mad Max syndrome, where people just going to run red lights now and do whatever. And they see it as a like low level crime. But actually, it's, it's, they add up when someone gets killed by, you know, running a red light and hitting someone in a crosswalk or a bicyclist, or it's all the same noises. So let's see some action.
Thank you very much.
Yes, good evening, council members. And staff. A few different items. I propose to look at LU1F mainly for questions of whether the city, to decrease the city's legal liability. I'm going to read it. The land use plan map shall provide enough land in the various residential use categories to allow for development of a variety of types of new housing units and residential environments. The purpose shall be to achieve an appropriate balance between single-family housing on individual lots and multi-unit housing types. I propose that there's going to be virtually no single-family housing on individual lots. And so in the future, the Builders Association or the Realtors Association might point to this and say, we are not following the general plan. I'm not a lawyer. It's up to you what to do. If it were up to me, I would just strike that policy. But there's probably other reasons for it. That's why I brought it up. Other items to look at, Commissioner Peter Liman is hot on electric vehicle charging stations, which are not currently required except for electric vehicle charging AQ6. This is on page 4-38 or page 162 of the PDF. I don't think this is the right way to go about it. For one thing, it's based upon number of parking spaces as a percentage. There will be buildings built, apartment buildings that have no parking. And so therefore, they'd have no electric vehicle. So that's something that needs to be discussed. I'm not saying it's wrong. I just think it needs to be discussed because it hasn't been discussed. I believe that there are some policies that were transferred from Gateway into the general plan that need to be reworded. I have a list of them, and that's technical stuff. It's not, but they refer to Gateway and they really should be referring to the general plan. I would ask the council to request of staff the local coastal plan categorical exclusion and when that comes into play and how it may be used. You're not allowed to talk about the Barrow district for Gateway, but you can talk about areas like South G Street. And when the planning commission was going through all these hundreds of policies, there is a system in place called a framework where the commissioners submitted in advance the topics that they wanted to discuss on Friday and they were printed, or before Friday, so they were printed in the agenda package. And that way, the public would know what is on your minds and what you might discuss. I found that to be very good. I'm also going to vote for more meetings. This meeting is partial because you're missing two council members. We missed a meeting on Gateway. You're having a meeting for the budget as a special study session. That's a one-year program. This is a 20-year program. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, please move.
My name's Lana Weird, and I haven't had the chance to dive in yet to the general plan or to the Gateway plan. It's on my to-do list to look at it more. But I wanted to just come in to make a comment of gratitude first for the leadership that this council took in calling for a ceasefire and to say that this also, that this general plan and this Gateway plan is an opportunity to be a leader for what kind of culture do we want to see locally in our region, but also in a broader sense. And so just wanting to call in, earlier today, I was at a placemaking meeting for a healing center for youths living with addiction. And just trying to think of how much we can do regeneration on a landscape and how that can help us to heal and regenerate ourselves and our communities as well. And so as we proceed with the general plan, proceed with the gateway plan, just calling in that intention for placemaking and that it's not just about infrastructure, really, it's about how do we, what kind of culture are we trying to create? And so to call in places where we can have intergenerational people be able to meet easily, that it doesn't have a cost barrier to be able to do that, putting some of that intention in. And I'm just here to say that I'd like to be, continue to be involved in this and put my mind in it more. It hasn't happened yet, but it's starting. So here I am speaking, and that's about it for this moment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the audience? Is there anyone on Zoom?
There is. Our first speaker is Lisa. Go ahead, Lisa. Lisa, you are unmuted. Let's make sure it's not on our side. Oh, now you're muted again. Did I mute? No. Okay, go ahead and unmute, Lisa. So close. I'll try to ask you here to unmute. You were unmuted. Lisa, can you unmute? All right, Lisa, we will come back to you. Try one more time. Colin, go ahead.
Good evening again, council members. This is Colin Fisk with CRTP. I just want to start out by expressing great appreciation for the proposal to include language in the plan that would at least allow the possibility of future pedestrianization of all or part of the plaza. As you know, that's an issue close to my heart. But I want to focus my comments on the topic of density. It's clear that we need more housing and we don't want a sprawl, so that means more density. But research also shows pretty clearly that denser development supports walking, biking, and transit, which are critical aspects of the fight against climate change. One study found that significant increases in walking and bus riding don't start until an area exceeds 13 people per acre. Arcata's average density for comparison right now is around three people an acre. So it is theoretically possible to achieve those walkable transit supportive densities with things like ADUs and small lot subdivisions, and we should be encouraging those as we are. But the reality is that leaving it up to the individual initiative and individual finances of individual homeowners just won't get enough homes built and density up in the foreseeable future. So getting up that average density will require some multifamily development, which means upzoning to allow denser projects in current single-family areas. Critically, density is also an equity issue, not just by providing more housing, but also because 30% of the population can't drive, either because of age or disability or income too low to buy a car or pay for fuel. A lot of people are also forced to own and drive a car because of the way we've built our communities, but really can't afford it. So I want you to keep in mind that higher density housing that makes cars optional because other modes are feasible is inherently more affordable than low-density car-dependent housing. It also allows people who can't drive for non-economic reasons like disability to live somewhere where they don't have to subsidize expensive parking and other vehicular infrastructure. Finally, just a personal note, I don't think this really should matter, but I do feel obliged to mention that I live in the Sunset neighborhood, one of the areas you've heard a lot about, that's been identified for potential future upzoning. And I strongly support that upzoning. Like the other neighborhoods that were identified, it's a great place to live, it's close to the university, it's close to downtown, it's pretty walkable and bikeable, and more people should be able to live here. So I just would ask you to support greater densities, support measures to upzone walkable neighborhoods, and support policies like parking reform that will make all of that possible. Thank you.
And thank you. All right, Lisa, go ahead.
Hi, I'm assuming you hear me now.
We do.
Okay, great. Since implementation measure LU9 was included in the general plan 2045 update, I have been trying to get answers to questions I have had and continue to have about the impacts that this measure will have on our community, our historic resources, and the character of the treasured neighborhoods that are targeted in the measure. I've yet to get answers. I would appreciate the council getting answers to the questions that I and other community members have brought up for many months about this measure and the impact it will have on our town. I have laid out my questions in a letter to you today as well as last week. If we upzone these neighborhoods to RM or RH combined with the continued mantra of Community Development Director David Loyah, that anything that complies with the zoning standards set forth in our code must be approved, the question is, how are we not going to lose existing homes, homes that may or may not be historic resources but are not identified as such, homes that do not have protection from demolition such as existing landmarks? How we will not see buildings that comply with RM or RH at 25 to 50 units per acre sprouting up in these neighborhoods at heights of 38 up to 45 feet? Excuse me. I believe the answer to this question simply is that we will lose homes, we will see buildings at 38 up to 45 feet, as they will comply with the code and the RM and RH zoning, whether administrative review or planning commission review applies. Why keep something in the plan if the possible implementation of it is something we do not want in these neighborhoods? If you cannot get answers to these questions tonight, perhaps there needs to be additional public hearings set on the general plan so that you can get the answers. answers or eliminate the measure altogether. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on Zoom?
There is no more online public comment.
All right, thank you. So I'll bring it back to the council. So, is there comments? Any of you have comments or any additions? Because I have one when we get around to it. Do you have anything?
Can we review what's already on our list that we didn't get to last time that we're going to talk about this evening?
Is that what's up here on the?
Yeah, you still have Plaza Design, closed-to-vehicles, Bayview neighborhood, and then we got some clarification on the LU1F. Those are the remaining ones right now on the list for tonight.
That works for me. I have a couple more things to say about loud cars, maybe too, if we go back to that one, but.
I do, too.
Why don't we just deal with loud cars right now? And your comments for Sarah?
Yeah, I just want to, I don't know, because it's like, this one's really, because I agree, obviously, yeah, we don't, nobody likes that. I live downtown. It's awful, you know, when you hear a giant muffler go by or whatever. I just, for me, how to police that really comes into my mind that, like, you have, like, am I supposed to jump out of my house at 2:00 AM, chase this car down, get its license plate number, call APD? Like, how practically? And like, I want to, I want to hear everybody's ideas, because like, I really don't see like, how practically to enforce something like this unless, you know, yeah, you have a cop at a stop sign that sees this car or has, you know, had a certain vehicle reported and knows the license plate number and can, you know, then cite that vehicle because there is, you know, a violation. There are, you know, certain allowable types of muffler systems, and, you know, modifications like that are considered illegal under municipal and state law. And so, I mean, I just, for me, I think adding language to, you know, show where that fits in the spectrum, sure, that's fine. Adding language to support, you know, I do hear a lot that, like, oh, we can't enforce that, or, oh, we're not enforcing that right now, that, like, okay, then let's put some language in that says that this is something that should be enforced when possible. But the practical enforcement of it is really, you know, what sticks out to me. And so, those, you know, I'd love to hear from you guys about what you feel about that. How do we practically enforce that? What does that look like? You know, and maybe that's not a general plan thing, and maybe that's a conversation with the police department, but.
Kimberly.
So, I just want to know, Greg, if you, to make a point, sent all these noisy muffler, hopped-up, awful exhaust cars to my neighborhood. No, I'm just kidding. You know, I really do understand what you're saying, because 30 years of green screen has been removed from my neighborhood. And so, I can't think. I can't sleep. It makes me jump out of my skin. It gets every dog on the bark start blocking or barking. Noise pollution is a real thing. I feel my blood pressure going up when I hear these vehicles go by me now. I had the fortunate, you know, protection of 30 years of green screen protecting me, but now I don't. So, you don't, you know, out on these streets, well, just go to the high school. That's how you can enforce this. I think that's one place to start, because that's where a lot of them are coming from. And that's all I have to say about that.
Well, I'll just mention one thing that I just, I don't, maybe I read it in the New York Times, maybe, but it was an interesting story about Seattle. And Seattle has a car that perpetually, every night around 3 o'clock, it runs up and down the streets. It's extremely loud, and it wakes people, and because Seattle is taller, and they have buildings, it reverberates off of the buildings, and it wakes up dogs and people and so forth. And it happens on a regular basis, and they have not been able to find out who's doing it. So, I just wanted to add that to what Sarah was saying, how are we going to find them? But it seems worthwhile to at least add that noise to the noise element that we have listed here, to put it in here in decibels somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just, I'll just add that I think certainly adding the loud car to understand where it falls on the spectrum is helpful. We have been successful. We have had a few specific cars in specific neighborhoods within the last, I'll say, 12 to 15 months that do, had been doing some drag racing, very regular times. And when that occurs, we have been successful in being able to pull them over. When we were able to remove the car that day, it wasn't registered. It wasn't registered to them. It wasn't, they had no, you know, so there are times that we can have some success in that. I think that you're correct, that this is hard to enforce. It doesn't make it impossible. And I know that the police chief is looking at, you know, now that they're back up to full staff, we've got staff that are cycling off of field training, you know, are there opportunities? They are out and around the streets a lot. They are going to run into loud vehicles at times. The majority of the times, it might not be the vehicle that annoyed a specific person that day, and without that person being willing to make that citizen's arrest, but the car is gone when we get there, right? So, it is challenging. But I know that the chief is looking at, are there ways that, you know, you could have a short period of time where you really try to make an impact, and then that gets reverberated within, you know, that community. But, you know, I've been honest with Greg as well, that it's not a high priority if they hear a loud car, but they're actually on a call, going to a 911 call, they're certainly not going to stop. So, it's challenging, but it's certainly not out. I don't think that your general plan needs to address it further. I think it really is more of an enforcement issue.
I agree. Are we able to just add loud cars, maybe around chainsaws? In the list? I mean, it's rocket.
We'll get the official readings.
It would be between busy urban street and heavy truck and chainsaws, because we don't have snowmobiles here. But it would be in that area.
Wherever you want to put it, we'll put it there.
Wouldn't that go under the health and safety element also? Or would that be duplicating efforts?
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary. I mean, I think the point here is to put what the, you know, where on the spectrum a loud car would fall. And we'll work with our acoustics folks that work for JHT to tell us where on the spectrum we should put that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. We can take that off the table.
And I'm happy to hear that we have been able to get a couple culprits, one car at a time, and the news will spread that this will happen, and hopefully, that will also just take care of itself in that way as well.
So, which one would you like to go to next?
What a sound there.
Would you like to decide?
Bayview, Plaza Design.
Okay.
And LU1F.
So, the Bayview one was a discussion, you know, I did bring up that we wouldn't even have a discussion around Bayview if the university back in 2008, '09, '10, in that area were able to acquire that many houses in that neighborhood and remove them, and then build, whatever, two, three-story buildings in order to accommodate staff and faculty, which was an intention which fell away, and there was a lot of opposition to it. But it really did get the neighborhood quite anxious. So, that is still a topic, and we've heard it today for Sunset. And Sarah, you have an opinion on that, and so does Colin Fisk. And I think if you had a fire, this is, you know, I look at it this way, you probably wouldn't be going around just picking on houses and removing them. But if you had a fire that caused devastation, and you lost half of a block or a block, and then you looked at that and how to bring that back into housing again, that may be an opportunity that you would look at higher density and figure out how it could fit within the neighborhood. And so, when I think of it, I think of it from that point of view. I don't think of it from the point of view of just going out and marking houses and removing them. Now, that doesn't mean that couldn't happen, but I did see a proposal where there was a neighborhood with just a few units, houses on it, units, but they figured that they could probably put a couple ADUs in there, which would intensify that little corner of the block or half-block, and still pick up more housing. So, I think in some ways, we could have something of that nature, but that's not devastating. Anyway, those are just thoughts of mine. And, you know, fire is something that does happen, and it's really affected a lot of insurance for homeowners right now because of the fires elsewhere in California and how they are reviewing us for fire damage, and the thinking that we're going to have it coming out of Redwood Park, right down and swoop everyone out.
Yeah, and I don't have too much to add on the Bayview conversation tonight, because I feel like we kind of covered it when talking about upzoning at the last meeting, and that, you know, I mean, I think the practical thing to do, like we said, is to just push that implementation measure out and just, you know, see how Gateway develops, and then be able to look at that neighborhood by neighborhood and work with those communities to, you know, see what that would look like and talk about that. So, I think that fits, you know, with what we previously kind of directed.
Do you think four years is far enough pushing it out, or do you think, because it takes so long for development to occur, pushing it out to six years?
I think four, I mean, it's totally fine to start looking at it, right? Again, we say four to start looking at it, and then is there the money? Is there the grants? And then by the time you say four, it's six, and then it's 10, and 25 years later, we're going to be updating the general plan again, so.
So, I would go for six, just, I mean, as we've been told that it is a living document. I guess I was just starting to think about something also, is when I lived on LK Boulevard over by Blondie's, trying to get through my master's program and the loud music till all hours of the night, I just think of, what's that going to look like in some of these small neighborhoods if there is, you know, some of this mixed juice, and somebody does decide to open up a beer and sandwich bar kind of thing that are having music and open mic, and it's your neighbor, and you have small children, and they have to go to school the next day. So, just kind of putting that out there, that there are certain neighborhoods that it might be more conducive for. These neighborhoods are already, they're there, whereas with, well, anyway, there's a lot of arguments, and we are going to push it. So, I guess it's a moot point at this point.
So, you're thinking in terms of increased density, would it bring in bars and restaurants?
Sandwich shops and beer, yeah.
I don't see that actually happening in the residential areas, but it could. You never know.
LK would. How's it? Those, that's their apartments and student housing and regular housing and single-family homes and.
Yeah, but it's down, it's regulated. It's not all through the whole neighborhood.
Anyway, we're putting it off. I would love to see it go to six, and it is a living document. If we have more information way before that, we certainly can change.
Yes, and I agree with that. So, my point is, and I've been, Colin and I, over the years, have a disagreement about this, and I can remember.
Can we hold up just a second?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the rest of the council. I don't want to change that tonight. I don't feel comfortable changing that tonight.
And what we're talking about really is LU9 versus just Bayview neighborhood. Okay. Okay, so we're going to hold it four years, but we can check in with the other council. Okay.
That was kind of, I think we got to consensus at the last meeting with everybody, and now they're not here, and we're going to change it. That doesn't seem right to me, so.
Okay, on to Plaza. Okay, thanks, Ellen.
So, what I was thinking of, D-2A Arcade Plaza Design, and that's, it's up there, right there. And so, what it says in red is, "The plaza and adjacent streets may be closed to vehicular traffic. Consider making the plaza car-free." This is a possibility in the future, but at this, I would say, until we see a heavy, a large amount of residential within our community, I think it's premature. Maybe we could put this off to 10 years or something, because I understand it, but in order to have, we have buildings and we have businesses, and if it's a car-free plaza, what kind of activities are we going to have downtown so that we have people coming in? And right, we're in a stage where I would like to say, you know, we really have to look at our economic development and what's happening within our whole community and within our business community. And when it's in red, what does it mean? I should start from there.
It just means that there's a change, and so it's drawing your attention to that. So, the underline and the colored text are the changes that have been made by the planning commission since the December 23. Some of these also incorporate the changes that you made on the 14th.
So, that means we're going to implement closing the plaza off to traffic? I mean, we are for the farmer's market.
Yeah, this, the way that it reads right now, it's consider, so it doesn't definitively make it happen. It's sort of like an implementation measure buried in a policy, but certainly the council can change it if they wish.
Yeah, and I feel like we could maybe make that more specific or something and say, or actually, more specifically vague, and say, like, consider a long-term plan, right? So, that's like what you're saying, it pushes it out for, you know, an X number of years, but consider a long-term plan for making the plaza car-free.
Do you want to move this into an implementation measure, and then it's clear that it's not policy in effect as of now, but it's something that the council can examine over the?
In the future, because just looking at car-free, and then you have deliveries, and so then you have to figure out your delivery times for your trucks, and do they have to come in before whatever, 9:00 AM in the morning to make their deliveries? Because right now, you'll see, you see UPS and the other trucks that are delivering food and alcohol, et cetera, to the businesses, and plaza-free means they can't even be there. So, then you have to figure out how you're going to utilize all your alleys, and it gets really complicated. And I think it's something in the long-range future. So, if we all of a sudden see that we have that place I can't talk about gets developed, and we find that we have other development happening over in another place, you know, all around, as this plan you guys are working on, and we see we have, and we see downtown, maybe we have additional housing going in, maybe we have somebody that's going to build up higher, and we build the density. And that density is what you see in European cities, and those that don't have traffic or cars is because you walk up to, you're there, and you look up, and you say, "Oh, my gosh, this building is 10 stories high." You look inside, and you see how many mailboxes there is in there. There could be 40, 50 mailboxes, and so, and it's all framed like that. And Jim Test used to talk about this when he was on the council. He wanted, he would talk about not having cars on the plaza, but he was also coming back from Europe and seeing the way it was there. And then there would be a subway, and you'd get on the subway, and you'd go off somewhere. And we just aren't at that level. We're a rural community still, and we have to keep remembering, even though we think we're different, we're still very rural. And I think we have to think about that. And so, that's why, Sarah, I really object to having it in red underline.
The red underline is just to show that it's a change. And so, once all these changes get adopted, they'll all be black and ununderlined.
But it's a worrisome underline for me, very, very worrisome. And if I made that a point of discussion and brought that around to the property owners and the business people downtown, we probably have a roomful of people to talk to about it. I haven't done that.
Well, and that's what I was going to say, and I know that, you know, even for events, a lot of the plaza businesses are pretty split on, you know, whether or not that helps their business, or that's something that is positive for their business. And so, you know, I think, as you were saying, Alex, I mean, that's going to take a lot more long-term planning, because I think, like, one of the mitigations for that is going to have to be some sort of, like, off-site parking, because that's going to be the biggest complaint of losing parking. If you close the plaza to cars, you're going to lose, you know, that's a lot of parking spots. So, that there's, you know, some sort of mitigation for that, because talking to business owners, it's very, like, you know, I don't know if I necessarily believe that philosophy, because I think that, you know, walking around and getting foot traffic is actually probably better for your business, but, you know, it's going to take a lot of, at least, conversation and discussing. And so, you said year three, I would minimum say five, but who knows? Again, that's going to take a lot of outreach and a lot of discussion with those business owners and property owners and the community in general, people who, you know, go do their shopping at the plaza, so.
And one other point is, over the years, we've talked about a parking garage, and they're very expensive to do. And just figuring out how to do that, and if that's a solution, it's, and it's a very expensive solution.
Does this look good for councilmembers?
I would change one word, car-free, to consider implementation measures in five years, to give it a little more time to think about it. And may we consider them, and we say yes, and we say no.
Well, and I think what David is saying with this type up is that we're going to take that policy out and move it and create a new implementation measure that's going to kick it out to year five.
Right now, we only have two of you.
No, I was going to concur with Alex, and it, the way I read that is, that's exactly what is going to be happening. So, yeah. Do we, have we gone through that entire list? And can we just kind of squirrel around here now, or should we?
There's a couple.
Couple, okay.
There's one, one more.
There it is.
So, LU1F. Kimberly, did you add that one to the list? We had a speaker that shared. We had a speaker that shared.
Yeah. It's the, the consider multiple, you know, the diversity of housing types, which again, it's one of those policies that has like some really, you know, vague, not committed language. So like, in my mind, because the commenter said, you know, about liability of that. I, just because the language is so vague, I don't really think that, you know, is necessarily the issue. But I, I do agree that like, does it need to be in there, I guess, but it, because it's just kind of regurgitating and saying, hey, the land use plan map looks like this and this, these are the types of zonings that it has. I don't really have a problem with it, but I'm open to, to hearing what other people say, just because I don't think it's very committal for us. Because also that, in my mind too, sorry, now that I'm reading it, sorry, you guys. But that, you know, that balance by building more dense housing, housing that will create that balance. Because currently it's mostly dominated by single-family homes. So by building more dense housing, you are actually striking a balance between dense housing and already existing single-family zoning.
We do also have a policy almost identical to this in the housing element. I think when we originally looked at this, um, you know, this is just a 20-year plan. It is not a forever plan. Your housing element is a seven-year plan. You update that right now every seven years. The state could change that timeframe again. But, but to council member Schaefer's point, it is also very vague. It is a tad redundant with what you have in your land, in your, uh, housing element. So it's the choice of the council if you want to keep it or remove it.
I, I guess what you said though is that the housing element does change every seven years. And so maybe we could keep it, but to rewrite it a little bit so that it's a little bit more clear. Or we could just get rid of it.
Or should, or should we rewrite the one, rewrite what's in the housing element or just re, take it out?
One of the obligations of the housing element is to show that you're meeting your regional housing needs allocation. And that regional housing needs allocation is divided into each income category. And so this policy or something like it is going to be in every housing element that you adopt. Because the state will say you need to have a, a policy that reads something like this, so.
So get rid of it.
It's, there, you know, I certainly don't think you're putting yourself at any kind of legal jeopardy by saying that you want to have a, a balance. There's certainly no metric in here that you can, you know, have somebody say, look, you're not meeting it because you didn't meet that metric. But it is a, you know, it's more fluff and it is duplicate of what's in your housing element. So certainly if you're feeling like taking it out, it's not going to.
I, I think taking it out, if we're, we're already, it's kind of duplicative, so.
So Sarah, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that. It, I'm all about just, yeah, de-vagify things. And if we're already, you know, saying it in the housing element, again, what does that really?
It's been.
Mean, you know, so.
And it says now removed. So we could go on to L U three.
Uh, L U three, you actually talked about at your last meeting, so that is the Economic Development Strategic Plan. We changed that to year now. It is still in your budget. You will review next week.
Okay, and is there anything else?
It's all that's on the list right now.
That's it? Is there anything new that anyone wants to bring up that they forgot?
Yeah, um, we had received the council, uh, an email, um, right before the meeting. And it was on, um, C M four C three. And I guess first I, I wanted to say that they had congratulated our planning commission on bringing the active transportation element. But there were two things that they wanted to see. One was to drop the C M four C. Requiring through traffic for cars on all neighborhood streets runs counter to the city's stated goals of prioritizing active transportation over car use. They had recently had a pleasure of going down to San Luis Obispo's greenways and, uh, which creates low-stress cycling routes throughout neighborhoods to schools and other destinations. And one measure they employ, it looks to be least expensive is traffic-driven diversion, sorry, not driven. That would be countered. Partially closing off some residential streets to cars at some intersections so that motor vehicles must turn left or right, but bikes can ride through. And this leaves enough for car access for the people who actually live on the street, but keep drivers, uh, other drivers from using it as a higher speed passageway or other, you know, to get to their other destinations, so. And then they go on to say that researchers find the local streets with traffic diverters are associated with a 96% decrease in the risk of bicy, bicyclist injury. When the circulation element came before the transportation committee, several other members commented on their positive experiences with this measure in other cities and disagreed with the policy of doing it, uh, as only a last resort. And then the other change they were talking about was ending the class three bike routes. These streets with no traffic calming measures or bike lanes, which simply have images of charros painted on the pavement. Uh, there's no evidence to show that these provide any safety benefits or increase bicycle use among people who don't ride due to safety concerns. Um, and they may simply, they went on to say that it was more, you know, it was a line, but a lot of people didn't know what that meant. And, um, went on to say that the current language provides for new bicycle plan to change the planned class three routes, but avoids any commitment to the class four protected bike lanes to which safer alternatives. And they would like to see a stronger position. Is there a question? Am I reading too fast?
I was just wondering, I'm, I just looked, I don't see that. Who's it from?
Um, am I able to share that? I mean, it's, it was Dr. Wendy Ring.
Well, you, Wendy Ring?
That's correct.
Okay, I just don't see all that written in here, but yes, I'm sure it is.
Did you have some suggested changes you wanted to make?
I do think that there, what they were wanting to do was to drop C M four C.
Well, and I think it would be just C M four C four, not the whole policy, right? Because four talks about that idea, yeah, that, that neighborhood should remain open to through-vehicle traffic.
Just four C.
Four, it's four, yeah, but it's just the fourth part of four C, correct, four. But yeah, just that number, which is confusing, because the whole thing is four. Yeah, um. So can, can we get a little more background on that? Because I'm just trying to imagine how. Get that car. Um, I'm just trying to imagine, you know, how, I guess what that would look like and why, because I'm imagining like a lot of streets, my, my go-to city for good bike planning is Berkeley in my mind. And so like I go to Berkeley where they do have all those like, yeah, there's like, you'll be driving and then all of a sudden there's a giant planter in the middle and you're like, I cannot go through here unless I'm a bike. And so I actually think that's a good thing. And so how does that play in with that policy? And I, I would then tend to agree that maybe we should just strike that out if there might be a situation that arises where that could be a good policy.
Unfortunately, the city engineer isn't here, here anymore to answer that question more specifically. But I believe that this was part of the complete streets, uh, you know, policy is to making it available for all modes. Excuse me. But certainly, you know, we've talked about, you know, uh, having moon earths on L Street, on Sixth Street and elsewhere. And so I think that those are the kinds of warrants for safe street policy that would make it so that you wouldn't have them be through streets. They would only be open to local traffic. You know, but I don't think that removing this sub-policy impacts your ability to, um, establish moon earths. And I don't think it impacts your ability to approve projects that, you know, based on.
I guess, because it says all neighborhood streets shall remain open to through-vehicle traffic. And then the unless, do we?
And I think it is like, like we talked about last meeting, it's like, it's, it's vague enough that it adds inflexibility that when we want to do it, we can, but the policy is to not necessarily do it, basically, right? Like that, we're going to try to keep these streets open unless, you know, we can't implement the right type of, you know, complete streets policy or we want to change it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is another area where, um, I don't think it hinges on your ability, whether you keep it or not. And so if this is giving you heartburn, I would say take it out.
You heartburn? Is it giving you heartburn?
I mean, I, you see, I could see how it could give somebody heartburn, but it's not giving me heartburn, right? You know, I, I, I see it, but in my mind, it is, it is serving that purpose of flexibility to be able to, you know, this is, this is the norm and this is how we're keeping it, but we have the flexibility to be able to step in and, and change that and, and design these streets the way we want to.
As, as an idea, you may want to add language specific to moon earths in this policy.
Maybe, that was, yeah.
And then that'll give flexibility. So if it's a safe streets policy or if it's planned for a moon earth, and then that gives you the flexibility too, to say, we want these streets to be moon earths. And then they would be not open to, to traffic regardless of whether or not they met some other safe streets policy.
I would like to see the term moon earth in, in the general plan a few more times, so I would, I would support that.
It's just a fun word.
Changing the word shall to should.
Do you want to change shall to should? Do you want to change shall to should?
Yes, shall is much definitive and it's not flexible, but should could be like, well.
Yeah, like that, yeah, that's the basic policy. It should happen, but unless, you know, yeah. I like that.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, so one of the things about how having open streets, I think is that.
You shall do that.
When you, when you have streets that end and people are there, you have to back up and go around somewhere else. And if you think about, you know, gasoline, trans, you know, anyway. I just think sometimes it gets more difficult than you really anticipated. And sometimes they're removed after they do a trial. So we said shall. Okay, that's taking care of that one. Anything else? Okay, anything else? All right, that's it. Let's, um, finish that item. And, uh, we've gotten rid, we have, public has already spoken on this and so.
Could I, um, would finish that item? I was just, um, I did want to revisit what one of the speakers talked about, the electrical vehicle charging being based on the number of parking spaces and how that would affect then not having any E V charging as a result. Can we talk about that?
But the other thing you have to remember is the first parking space in a parking lot has to be for handicap accessibility. And so then if you only, like downtown, there was one person in the alley that was able to put in a parking place off the alley. And so it's handicap accessible, which is perfect.
Talking about electric vehicles.
I know, but it's the same kind of idea, you know, that, and I think electric vehicles, I know how you brought it up, is that that may be what you have is your, um, car for your whole unit. You'll have one electrical vehicle and that everybody will be sharing it.
I love the share car, but I guess I, I was hoping that we could have a little bit of conversation about what that means, because for me, it says then if it's based on the number of parking spaces, there's not going to be any. I mean, you said that it's going to be priority over having a handicap space and then perhaps E V spaces.
Is there a way that like, I guess, because I'm thinking that, and, and correct me if I'm wrong about the concern that, that you're kind of bringing up, is that why would they worry about making electrical vehicle charging if they only get X number of parking spaces that they have to create? And so, I mean, is there a way to, to make it stated that, you know, E V charging spaces wouldn't count towards that parking maximum? I guess we, or, or something like that, um, to, to have like E V parking spaces be exempt from the overall count of parking spaces?
Except for there's a cost involved in E V parking spaces, more than a regular parking space. So why would they opt for any E V parking spaces if they don't have to? I mean, the bottom dollar is, I mean, the bottom line is about the dollar, so.
Maybe and not, depending on how it's set up. Do you have a comment? All right, that's, you brought that up as a community benefit. And that could be a community benefit.
I think it's currently in as a community benefit. I think the question is whether to require a higher proportion of electric vehicles, parking spaces. And/or whether there's a policy that, you know, requires a minimum number of parking spaces and they, that they be electric vehicle parking spaces. Uh, but I think to the point that was made, you know, these are going to be expensive to install. So one of the things, I mean, I, I don't have any data to share with you. I don't have any way to advise you. But just to caution that the, you know, more, uh, burden that we put on to private development to provide, you know, all of these different amenities as requirements, uh, is going to make development in general less attractive in our community. And so at some point you have to balance the, um, you know, balance the, the benefits that you, you know, perceive from, you know, requiring those amenities against that. Um, and I guess the, the only, you know, solid thing that I could tell you is that you can always go back and amend it later. And so if you want to start with something high, I mean, I think we've started with something that's reasonable. You did have one planning commissioner who wanted to see more. The rest of your planning commission recommended that you go with what's in your general plan now. And that was their recommendation to you. But if you as a council want to go higher, then you can make that number higher. And you could wait to see if developers come and tell you, well, I'd love to develop in your community, but I just can't make it pencil, pencil because of the electric chargers.
Could, could you get some data for us so that we have some way to frame this?
I have, I have no way to produce that data. You're just really going to need to wait and see, um, what the costs are. I mean, right now, costs of market rate development in general is a, is on really slim margins. And we're asking a lot of development. What we're trading that development in exchange for is ministerial pathways. Now, ministerial pathways, eight years ago, when we were developing, developing this concept, it was a really advanced idea that, you know, would have been a real benefit eight years ago. The state has basically taken most of that benefit away from us. And so now we're left with a situation where the, um, the cost is still higher. But the benefit that we're conferring to those developments has been, uh, basically subsumed by the, the state law. And so you just need to be mindful of that.
Sorry, I didn't mean to sigh into that.
I thought that was me.
I guess here, here's my concern, then that's going to make folks either not get an electric vehicle or not move into that particular development, because where are they going to charge their vehicle?
I mean, I can, I can only speculate. I can't give you real, you know, information about that. I think that electrical vehicle charging, um, I think that electrical vehicle batteries are going to improve and increase. We're going to see a broader infrastructure over time, but that's just me guessing. That's me visual, visualizing into the future. There's definitely, I mean, we've heard people say, well, how, you know, how are people going to move here? They're going to be walking, you know, 10 blocks with two bags of groceries and three kids in.
In a rainstorm, in the snow, in the snow.
Both ways. The reality is that, you know, people are going to choose their, their places to live based on what their needs are. And so if their needs aren't met by that development, they're not going to live there.
Right.
And the other thing, um, we're still in a rural area. And a lot of people don't want full electric charging vehicles because they don't, they're, if they want to go somewhere, they only have so many miles that they can actually go before, and they have to know everywhere they can charge along the way. So you're going to see more hybrids. And that, and a lot of people like those because they, when they, and they can, I don't know. Anyway, let's just not get into that. Let's just see what happens. That's another thing where we can see how that goes.
Yeah, and, and for me too, I think I, I see the want and need for more E V charging because yes, there are aggressive goals for getting more electric vehicles on the road. I also think that like we are going to decide in 10 years, ah, look, we're out of lithium and like electric vehicles are not going to be, you know, the thing either. And then we're going to say, where can we put this hydrogen fueling station? Or, or whatever the next, you know, big craze in transportation is. And I think the real key, which is kind of what the whole gateway area plan and some of these things that we're making updates in the general plan, because Alex can talk about that, um, has to do with getting people out of cars in general, whether they're electric or not, and riding public transportation and walking. And I think, you know, if, if those are the goals, then those are the people that we are going to see live in those types of housing. And so the mandate of E V charging is going to be kind of negligible to those folks. And I also think that again, within the next 10 years, and I think David alluded to this a little bit, but like the infrastructure for charging is going to be different. It's going to change. It's going to look different. for charging is going to be different. It's going to change. It's going to look different. All the chargers that we already have are going to become obsolete. And so I think because electric vehicle technology is, in the scheme of things, so new that we can't base everything off providing that infrastructure, because I think it is not going to be as long staying as people think it is going to be. That is all speculative, but.
No, no, I don't think so, because we've already had one that was obsolete over, I believe on F Street, and we've had to replace it with other ones. There's been a replacement. We have more than one kind. So if you have this kind of car, you can do this, this. So let's just wrap it up. Is there anything else?
Well, it's not 10 yet. I'd like to continue this. No, I'm just kidding.
Well, we aren't finished with our meeting yet, by the way.
We can move on.
Okay, so let's just, uh, not bother with it at this time.
So no change on EV charging? Is that, we're?
No change.
Maybe later, as we know more.
It's a new technology.
All right, no change at this time.
Yes. So with that, um, what kind of action would you like? Do you have any members of the public wanting to comment? And we already have done that, final comments from the council. We've already done that. Didn't we have comments from the public, even holding up signs? So, um, we're finished with that. There's no action. So we can move on to our next item.
I have a quick question. Uh, just in terms of the noticing of the public hearing, does it still need to be continued to the July 17th meeting?
I mean, you, you can continue it again if you want, but I think they continued it. Did they continue to the, why don't you go ahead and continue to the 17th?
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, because what we did in consent today was just gateway, it looks like. So anyway, yeah, continue the general plan to July 17th, please.
We need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes. So now we're going to go on to oral and written communications. The city council values your comments, and the public comment period allows people to address the council matters not on the agenda. Speakers will be eliminated, eliminated, will be limited to three minutes each. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the agenda. The council may respond to statements. If you're in person and wanting to give public comment, please line up at the podium. So I, I just have to go back for a quick clarification of our manual. So when I read the first, it said you had to choose. Are you going to be in the three minute or are you going to be in the two minute?
That is correct. So if you spoke at the earlier portion of public comment, you are not allowed to speak during this portion of public comment. So please be kind and don't make me be the referee to that tonight.
And I know you spoke about bicycles, but that was a different.
Yeah, so I've not spoken tonight in oral communication.
Okay, so you're in luck. Thank you.
And you will not be eliminated.
But I'm going to limit you when you start.
All right, so I'm limited. All right. Uh, once again, hello to staff and to council members. Um, James Becker, um, I just want to thank, uh, council members White and Schaefer, and also Mayor Matthews, um, for addressing a policy at the last council meeting in the, the gateway discussion. I think I can say that now since it wasn't on the agenda. Um, that would allow a developer to move the L Street pathway, and also for taking time at the gateway discussion of the last council meeting to further the conversation about the L Street Rails as Trails corridor as it relates to the future linear park. I do thank you for that. Um, and also for putting forward language to preserve and protect the trail and hopefully open spaces at both the north and south end of the corridor. Um, I believe the linear park, um, if planned properly, will be a huge plus for the future infill, a gift to our entire community, and a welcome sight, uh, to travelers on the Great Redwood Trail. And look forward to the implementation policy as it becomes a reality and any other thing moving forward on that subject. Anyway, um, thank you for that, and I appreciate how that went on at the last meeting and everything else. Thanks.
Thank you. So you, you spoke at, how does, he's good. Okay. Okay. Keeping track, we're going to have to keep track of people. And were you in this one? Were you in that one?
Is this a new policy that's from now on is going on because I, uh?
Yes, it is.
You're, you're cutting out, uh, some of the public comments.
I think.
We talked about this like two or three times when we went over protocol manual. It was, I felt very clear.
And so.
But it gets longer now that he's waited.
But, and I explained it in the middle, in the beginning is possible. I'm in here in the middle now. We're at the end. So you're ready.
Thank you, council members. Um, I'm not going to discuss, uh, general plan or gateway plan items, just, uh, procedures and processes. Um, I think it'd be very helpful, in addition to having the track changes version, uh, of these documents, to have a list of changes. And this is very common, um, so that you don't have to thumb through the entire document to see what's changed, but there's actually an ongoing list. And it should be retroactive. It should go back to April 23rd, I think. Um, so we can see what, what you have talked about, what has changed, uh, in, in one, one list, as well as the track changes in addition to. Um, just a small item. We're not going to, you know, bring back the past or rediscuss things that have happened over these last two years, but I want to make sure the council knows the degree to which the committees, the input from the committees was disregarded by the planning commission, particularly the economic development committees' recommendations, and the transportation safety committees' recommendations. I'm not unhappy with the results, but the way in which it was handled was very dismissive. Um, the, uh, seeing as we've lost, um, with the mayor being absent, we've lost the opportunity for general plan, or excuse me, gateway area plan discussion. I do hope that the council adds one or two more meetings, uh, to this process. Uh, and I hope that the meeting on July 17th is not considered a time when these documents will be actually approved at just another stage. Um, the, tonight's meeting, there are three of the five of you. Again, we missed input in a lot of, uh, because of those two people missing. Um, the, uh, you have a special study session for the budget. That's a one-year program. The general plan is a 20-year program. I think it warrants a special session, special study session, where there's nothing else on the agenda. Um, I'm not glad that the tax issues weren't on the agenda tonight, but it would have been a very long evening if they had been. Uh, that's it. Um, I, I know I complain a lot, but I know that both you and the commission, the committees have done an awful lot of work to get us to this point. And as has been said, the general plan can be amended if it turns out there are things that aren't to our liking. Thanks.
Thank you. So we have one individual in the audience who hasn't spoken tonight. Are you interested in speaking? It's you.
No, I'm just listening. Thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity. So is there anyone else online?
No.
So we are going to go back. We're going to go to one more item. We have dates of future meetings, and we're going to confirm the June 12th, 2024 special council meeting at 6:00 PM in the council chambers to discuss and adopt the fiscal year budget for 2024, 2025. With that.
We are going to adjourn back into closed session.
Oh, that, oh, we didn't finish.
We did not finish closed session, sorry.
Okay, so we're adjourning to the closed session.
Could I just do a quick reminder that tomorrow's the chamber mixer and be sure to attend the, um, pre-dinner oyster, what is it called?
The Oyster Fest kickoff party at the pub.
Thank you.
Six to 8:00 PM.
So we are adjourned to a, to a closed session, and we will leave the room to do that. And so the meeting is actually adjourned.